Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015. I'd like to welcome all of our citizens as well as our administrators and legislators to these, this morning proceedings. At this time, I'd ask in all to please join us in the invocation which will be led by Dr. Ken Johnson of the Rhode Heavers Boys Ranch. And we will have Commissioner Harvey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please come forward and welcome.
I bring you greetings and salutations from the Rhode Heaver Boys Ranch. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer with thankful hearts. You've been good to us here in Putnam County. And while we look at our problems and address them, we acknowledge the blessings you have so enriched us with. We thank you for these commissioners you have placed your hand upon to guide us in local government. Help us to render unto Caesar the things that are Caesar's and to God the things that are God's. Give us the sense, Lord, to keep you first in our thought life, our family life, our church life, and in all decisions in our government life. We tremble at the responsibility before us and ask you to help us maintain our integrity while we make difficult decisions. Help the other citizens to support what is right. We ask for harmony when possible and wisdom to get the job done. Our Father, we ask these things in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Now, we will turn over to our county administrator for a special introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The new face seated to my right belongs to Mr. Stacy Manning, who assumed his duties and responsibilities as Putnam County Attorney yesterday. Mr. Manning comes to us with a number of years of experience in county government law as either the deputy county attorney or assistant county attorney, having previously served in Volusia and most recently in Osceola County. So, we're just happy to have Mr. Manning and we welcome him here to Putnam County.
How about a warm Putnam County welcome? Mr. Leary tell you that there was a 30-minute speech.
He did not. I don't have a 30-minute speech. But I will say, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all of you giving me the opportunity to, to serve, serve Putnam County and to the citizens of Putnam County. I just want to let you know that, that I'm here to hopefully give you the, the best legal advice that I can, that I can provide to the county, to the commission, to the administrator, and to staff. And once again, thank you and I'm very much looking, looking forward to it.
Welcome. Thank you so very much. We welcome the Manning family and thank you for accepting. Okay? Look forward to that. Commissioners, each of you should have been provided the September 8th, 2015 regular meeting proceedings. It is presented to you for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Second.
We do have a proper motion with double seconds, approval of the amendments from September 8th. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item four is public comment. There are some citizens who, of course, would like to speak concerning a specific item or some specific items for the convenience of the general public who are here for the landfill and convenience center fee policy adoption there with the consent of my colleagues. We would like to move that up at this time and include it as a part of public comments. But the specific issue there, and we will continue with public comments, but many of our citizens have expressed a concern and want us to drill down on what the actual plan is. So, I'd like to call with consent of each of you all. I'd like to call Mr. Gas forward. Mr. Larry Gas, if you will come and give us a synopsis of this specific issue. And then, we will have, I do not have a lot of cards. We do ask, it is not a mandatory thing, but we do ask citizens that are wanting to speak to us to fill out a card for the benefit of us being able to reach back out to you and contact you following the meeting for any potential questions or any clarifications that are necessary there. So, if you are planning to speak on this particular issue, please consider filling out a card. Good morning, Mr. Gas.
Good morning. After last year's solid waste assessment increase, which was a very large increase, the solid waste advisory board was appointed by mayors of the county and you commissioners. That board went through a lot of different things and made several recommendations. One of those recommendations was to either close the convenience centers because it's a duplication of services or to try to recoup the fees that are, or the expenses that are generated by the county servicing those convenience centers. As a result of that, we've looked at our finances for this year and we put in what we think would be an offset, which is about $350,000 is what it costs to run those by collecting fees for personnel using convenience centers and the landfill. What we're looking at is for the landfill and convenience centers for assessed residential disposal. People who have a, an assessed residence, the residents would be allowed to bring up to three 35-gallon bags of garbage for a $2 disposal fee or a standard pickup truck bid of horticultural trash to the county disposal facilities for a $5 disposal fee. This option is to be used no more than once per week and proof of assessment must be provided for this reduced disposal rate. These residents may also dispose of five car tires per year at no charge and they may also dispose of household hazardous waste and used motor oil at no charge. All customers at the landfill, except for those that are assessed, will be charged $44 per ton for the disposal of waste with a $5 minimum charge. Tires will be charged at $125 per ton. The weight and resulting fee will be determined by the landfill scale. The convenience centers, except for the assessed residence disposal, all customers will be charged by the cubic yard for waste disposal with a $5 minimum charge. The rates will be as follows. Household garbage is $11 per cubic yard. Horticultural trash is $10 per cubic yard. Construction debris is $14 per cubic yard. Tires will be charged at a rate of $1.35 per car tire, $2.70 per truck tire, and $5.40 for off-road tire.
Okay. Any other comments?
These fees that look like a, a new charge really aren't because all the citizens are paying for pickup at the curb side. We did make a change this year in the hauling contract because we only had bulky waste pickup once every two weeks with the yard waste. And that is unsightly if you take a sofa out and set it by the curb and it takes two weeks before that sofa gets picked up. So, all bulky waste is now on a weekly basis in the new garbage hauling contract. So, that bulky waste will be picked up and taken away with your regular garbage on a weekly basis.
Okay. Thank you very kindly. Mr. Wayne McLean is the first speaker. Behind him, Mr. Marvin Diver. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Wayne McLean. I live at 285 West River Road, Palacka, Florida. I'm here representing myself, not my company, nor my wife.
Okay. Make sure the record shows that.
Okay. I do want to start off by saying I've had the opportunity to work with Rick Leary and his staff in the past and I can tell you personally that nobody watches the dollar closer than Mr. Leary and his staff, which I think by now, if you've been a commissioner for a while, you know that. However, I've talked to Mr. Gas a couple of times, heard him speak at the chamber. And as a longtime citizen of this county, I just think this fee has not been well thought out. And let me give you the reasons why quickly. I lived in a county, Rockingham, North Carolina, specifically Reevesville was the city. I lived in the county when they imposed such a fee. What we saw within a year were couches, refrigerators, washing machines, et cetera, thrown in woods and off the side of the roads. I know currently we may have that in our county, but it quickly increased. I just don't see why the citizens of Putnam County have to pay an additional dollar because it's not a convenience for me to load up my pickup truck and go down to the, to the landfill. I do it to help keep it from being on the side of the road and being in my yard. And yes, we do pick up items that we see along the road and take it to the landfill, me not being the only one. But it seems like the citizens of Putnam County are being punished because citizens of Clay County, Flagler County, surrounding counties have the opportunity to bring their trash over here to be dumped and not charged. It just seems to me that this is not thought out very well. I asked Mr. Gas yesterday what a standard pickup truck was. Is it a small pickup truck? Is it a half-ton pickup truck? Is it three-quarters? Is it one-ton? What is it? And then, I also understand that renters have to show proof that they are paying electric bill or that their landlord has paid the solid waste fee. I can tell you that is going to be a problem when some of the consumers show up at the landfill to do that. You know, I, I love living here in Putnam County, choose to live here. My wife and I both love it. We try to be part of the community. But I just see this as a slippery slope that we're going down with this fee being imposed on our citizens of Putnam County. What we do with citizens outside the county is the commission and the staff's issue, but the citizens of Putnam County, I think you will see very quickly that our roadways will become trashier and that you will have a number of people that will just forget taking things down to the landfill and will just start throwing it in the woods. And again, I'm not talking against any citizen of Putnam County, but I've seen this happen before. Thank you very much for listening to my comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. McLean.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Ladies. We talk about curbside service. It's 210-foot from my house to the curb. Now, I have to haul my garbage down to the curb, as y'all call it, to have it picked up. I have no problem with that. But my problem is when I have, I live in the country, I have big trees, lot of limbs, trash, yard waste. I load it on a trailer. I've got to haul it to the, to the curb. If I dump it at the curb, I'll wait a week for them to come pick it up. I'm going to have a bunch of neighbors on my neck, me leaving it there. I always have loaded up, carried to the dump, unloaded, and come back to the house. No, no problem. I feel like I'm doing the county a favor when I do that. And I just can't see me having to pay them to let me come, excuse me, let me come out there and unload my trailer. And it's just like this man said, if we go through with this thing, you're going to see a lot more trash and debris along the roadways or in, in vacant fields or whatever. I know a nice place out on Buffalo Bluff Road, it's got a big pasture out there, probably put quite a few loads in there. Anyway, I, I sure wish you could find some other way to go with this thing because I, I just will be made my last trip to the garbage dump if I have to start paying to go across them scales. And another thing is, how y'all going to handle the traffic there? I've been out to the dump and have to wait behind five or six vehicles to get in across the scale. Now, if we got to wait on somebody to wait to come back out, you just compounding the problem right there. And so, I wish y'all would give this thing a whole lot more thought and consideration before y'all start putting more burden on the people that's already paying the waste fees. I thank y'all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Diver. Ms. Catherine Ratliff, is this the issue that you want to speak on?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Catherine Ratliff and we're new residents here. My husband and I have carried, I would say, 15 to 20 loads, trailer loads of yard brush. We've been clearing our land that we just bought to make it pretty and presentable. That would have been a lot of money if we've had to pay, plus paying taxes on the pickup. Well, we put it on the side before. They don't pick it up. They'll pick up maybe two limbs because their truck isn't big enough. And it really is going to gather up and gather up, going to look bad. And I want to commend y'all on your lending library. But the grass is growing over the sidewalk where mothers can't walk down there and it's really sad. And I thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ratliff. Ms. Karen Chadwick. We're speaking on the landfill issues. Are you wanting to talk about that? We're not doing the public comments just yet.
Not general comments?
Not yet.
Okay. I did have one comment about the landfill. Well, it has to do with Keep Putnam Beautiful, they're doing a great job getting everybody to clean up. And I live out, you know, in the interlocking area and there is some trash out in the woods, but it's not as bad as it has been. And I really do think if you start charging, I can pay the fees, I, I use, you know, I already pay my taxes, put my trash out and they pick it up. But I have used the drop box. But I think if you start charging, it's just how people are, they're going to go dump it in the woods. They do it now and it's free. So, I, I think it would, I understand wanting to raise more money, but I think it would cause more problems with trash being put out in the woods. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Chadwick. We'll call you back for the other issues in a moment. Mr. Robert Bly, you're next, sir.
Good morning. Robert Bly, 116 Sand Lake, Pomona Park, Florida. I just have one question about this. Why is the new fee for the landfill not being voted on by the solid waste district?
Why is the new fee?
Yes. Why is this going through the Board of County Commissioners when it's should be part of the solid waste district?
The Putnam County owns the landfill, sir. Not, the solid waste district does not own the landfill.
Okay. But I thought the district was supposed to be involved with changes that were made to policies that had to do with the landfill.
Mr. Leary.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Mr.?
I think Mr. Castleberg can answer.
Yeah. This is, issue came up last week, Mr. Chairman, right before the workshop. Mr. Harvey actually raised it with me a few moments before the workshop. Since that workshop, I have reread and reread the various ordinances and there is an argument that could be made that it should be the district. My best reading of the ordinances, and again, I'm not taking away, it's not a slam dunk issue, a decision either way. My best reading is that the solid waste district sets the assessment for curbside collection and that the county is the one that is authorized to operate the land, that owns a landfill, operates on a day-to-day basis, and is entitled to charge fee. There's an ordinance that specifically says it's the county that sets fees and charges for use of the landfill facilities other than assessments, which are reserved to the solid waste district. So, I, I think it's a, it's not a clear-cut issue. My best opinion is that it's a county decision.
Thank you, counsel. Yes, sir.
The assessments, that last sentence, the assessments are up to the district. The way I read that is that this would be an assessment. So, that's why.
It's not an assessment, it's a fee, sir. It's a user fee.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bly.
Mr. Chairman. I did talk to counsel about this and I have raised that issue. We did change the resolution this year to include words like "up to." And I do feel like the solid waste district, if you polled them, would not be thinking that we, we were going to charge our residents to, to put stuff at our landfill based on that meeting. So, I do have concerns that we should be sending this back to the solid waste committee, but, and I have expressed that to our attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ken Schweng.
As Wayne said earlier, the problem you're going to have is the future. People wanting to dispose of their trash. If they're going to have to pay going to the dump, they're going to not pay putting it on my property, Walt's property, or if you have any property, they'll just dump it at the most convenient place. It may not be in public view as much because they're going to try to hide dumping it. But I own numerous rental properties that we keep cleaned up. Now, we have the option of setting all the trash outside at the street or loading it in our dump trailers, carrying it to the dump, and disposing of it. That's the method we have chosen. If we have to pay according to your fee schedule, $150 every time I take a dump trailer in, it's going out on the street and let you guys come pick it up once a week and see how fast it piles up. Now, that's not going to do anything about all the vacant property that I own that I have to clean up all the time because I'm the owner and someone's trash is on my property. Code enforcement wants me to pick up someone else's trash. We do that because we're mandated to do it. We take it to the dump because there's no other place to put it. Because there is no pickup on a vacant lot or vacant 10-acre tract. We keep it clean. We dispose of it. I pay considerable amount of money in landfill charges because I own numerous properties. I, I can't see that you're, you're only going to create more problems for yourself. I mean, if the problem is the other people coming in from out of county, gosh, that's you guys, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out how to stop that. But I mean, everybody in this county, you're going to know, most of us that go out there and dump, it's the same people all the time. We're trying to keep the place clean. We're mandated to keep it clean by your ordinances. And now, you want to penalize us and charge us. You dropped the solid waste assessment fees this year, 30 or what, 50 bucks, 60 bucks? And now, you want to come back and hit, you want to nickel and dime everybody for more fees. That's, I don't know. I think that's going to cause a lot of problems.
Thank you. Danny Baggs, you're the next speaker.
Yes, sir. I think everybody made some real good statements, Mr. McLean, Mr. Diver. Like Mr. Diver said, if you take oak limbs out, if your garbage pickups on a Friday, you take oak limbs out, there on a Monday, a big truckload of them, you leave them on the side curb, by Friday, they pick the limbs up, you still got a truckload of leaves there that somebody's got to go back because they've already fallen off. I worked for a big land timber company for 30-some-odd years. Whenever they stopped taking garbage on Sunday, I would have to unload a bulldozer on the side of the road and push the trash from in front of a gate right out here by the dump in order to get through that gate onto company land in order to do my job. That's what we're going to end up with right here. But what I'd like to know, it started out being a deal with the, us, with the out-of-towners coming in here. But now, it's turned into a money situation. It doesn't have anything at all to do with the out-of, and like Mr. Schweng just said, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out what to do with that situation.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, Mr. Bags. Chris Hancock, you're the next speaker.
Chris Hancock, 280 West Tokoi Road, Palacka, Florida, 32177. My family's original settlers here in Putnam County, we've lived there all our lives.
You pull that mic a little bit closer to you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I said, my family's original settlers right here in Putnam County, we've lived there all our lives. We've watched the county go from trash to being cleaned up. It looks really good. I'm proud of this county, proud to be a part of it. But I see that, that with this increase in fee, we're going to have a, a dump problem. The people are going to pile it up on the side of the road, just like Mr. Baggs said. We have some property out on West River Road, Palmetto Bluff Road. And I've personally picked up numerous, numerous trailer loads of trash and took them to the dump to keep people from, because they dump it at my gate. Now, who's going to be responsible to clean that up? Because I, I'm going to push it in the road now. I'll push it in the ditch, the county ditches, and I'll call the county and say, y'all got a problem out here. Because that's what's going to come to. I'm not going to pay a fee to pick up other people's garbage and carry it away. I think what we're doing is we're penalizing the citizens of Putnam County instead of addressing the problem. We're putting a Band-Aid on an issue that needs to be addressed with the people that are violating the code. We're already paying the fees. So, my mother was talking to Mr. Paliser yesterday and I was talking about a, maybe a sticker. I don't know. My thought was, was when a person buys a tag, that he can have the option of getting a sticker for his windshield. If it's not affixed to his truck or vehicle, he can't dump, unless he pays the fee. I mean, that's just an idea. I'm throwing it out. I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but something besides charging a man money to drop off garbage he's already paying to drop off. The other thing was going to be is if an individual has to start, if, if the county makes the waste management people start picking up the garbage that the individual citizens take out there, there's going to end up being an increase in their fees. So, now, we're going to penalize the county again. We're going after the citizens again. We take care, we're not taking care of the citizens of Putnam County. We're penalizing them for another problem. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just make a comment.
Identify yourself for the benefit of the public.
Yes, sir. Mike Anderson, Deputy County Administrator, Budget Officer. A point that was alluded to by Mr. Gas that I think maybe we need to bring to the surface again is the fact that these convenience centers have a cost to operate. Somebody has to pick up that cost. When we calculated the solid waste assessment this year, if you recall during our deliberations, the discussion, as I recall, was that it would be more equitable to charge the citizens that use the convenience centers for that service rather than crank that cost into the, the special assessment. So, we took that cost out. Under the assumption that we would charge for that service, we estimated the amount of revenue that would be generated from it and we took that out of the equation and calculated the, the new solid waste assessment. We can't provide that service for nothing. If the citizens that use that convenience center are not going to pay for it, then by all rights, we need to crank that cost into the special assessment. Somebody's got to pay for it. And if we do that, that's going to raise that special assessment another $10 to $11. So, again, to me, it, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that somebody's got to pick up that cost. Who's it going to be? The person that uses a service? Or you're going to make the citizen pay for it that never uses a convenience center? It, it's a simple equation in, in my opinion. So, with all due respect, I just wanted to make sure that was understood. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly.
Some of the...
Some of the people who made comments brought up reasons that this fee is going into place. We have to remember that the assessment is not for yard waste. The assessment is not for vacant property. The assessment is not for land clearing. Those kind of things were brought up in comments just a few minutes ago. And if you have vacant property, that property has not paid an assessment. That material from vacant property should be paid for for disposal. If you're doing land clearing, that is not covered under the ordinance. That should be paid for. It's not covered by the assessment. Tree removal is not covered by the assessment. If it is not leaves, grass, limbs less than four feet in length or four inches in diameter, if it's any larger than that, it is not covered by the assessment. Those items should be paid for. When somebody brings land clearing in that's been cut up into little bitty pieces and says, "This is from my yard," we have no way of knowing. This is one of the attempts that we're doing to try to make sure that there is equity for all of the citizens out there. The people who have a house on a quarter acre lot that's producing a amount of yard waste that's typical, and somebody who has twenty-five acres and is doing land clearing on that property and everything else, makes an inequity for the person on a smaller lot. They're paying a greater percentage of the disposal. By placing this fee, where all we're trying to do is recoup some of that cost and make it more equal for all of the citizens that are paying the assessment.
Okay.
Gass, let's use Mr. Swin, if you don't mind, your example. Multiple rentals, he's correct that he might have three or four families moving in a weekend. And he would pile that up. Now, he pays the assessment on every one of those rentals, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so why wouldn't he be able to do the county a favor, as he says, and move that off the street because it's very unsightly to the landfill?
Well, if you look at rental property, that's actually a commercial enterprise. If you have two evictions in a year from a rental property, that cleanout that's being done from a rental property would be greater than the actual amount of waste that should be brought in from the people living there.
So, you're saying it's not typical, as you referred to?
That's not your typical waste is a rental cleanout. That would not be considered your typical type of waste that's paid for in your assessment to be collected. It is a old couch that's being put out for pickup because you got a new one. It is your garbage that you are producing in your kitchen every week. It is the yard waste, the horticultural trash, the lawn maintenance. It's the maintenance of your landscape that you're paying for in your assessment. It is not all of these other entities that for years somehow or another have been allowed to go in free to the dump.
Oh, I'm not arguing this has led up to our high assessment and our problems. We have ignored this and the practices associated with it for a lot of years. But on the same thought, I don't think that we have spoken to the public well enough. I don't understand it yet. How could they understand it? I mean, it keeps, something new keeps surfacing every discussion we had. And I just, I have to say that. Mr. Anderson's point is right on. You know, we absolutely, I remember that, did not pull that in. We took it out of the budget. I'm not sure that wasn't a mistake. I just think we need more discussion on this, Mr. Chairman.
We took this to the Solid Waste Advisory Board. They were tasked with coming up with solutions to reduce the assessment. That was their main function, and to reduce the assessment as quickly as possible. Their first choice was to close the convenience centers. The second choice is to try to recoup the charges for the convenience centers. And for the convenience of double handling waste. And that is what this process is trying to do.
I agree. We are trying to do it, but I'm not sure we've done it yet.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Gass, while you're here, can I ask a few questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna drill down too far. I'll do that a little bit later.
If you're gonna ask multiple questions, I want to get all of our citizens. And once they bring it to us, then it won't go back out to the citizens.
I understand. You had mentioned the solid waste committees that were formed to study the landfill. I got an email from Ms. Debbie Griffin who said that they could never get the proper numbers on what the collection centers cost the county. Have you ever really, I mean, you said last week it's about a hundred and fifty thousand for each location. But she said they never really got the total numbers from you.
I did provide those numbers to them. I don't know if she was there at that time or not.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Kevin Heiser, Kevon?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm one of the Hancock's that are original settlers. I can remember when the washing machines and the refrigerators, back when we had green dumpsters in Bostwick, there was enough garbage to fill an acre, let alone that green can that they wanted us to put it in. I didn't ever use that. I carried it to the dump. I understand there's special collections out there in Interlaken or wherever. Has nothing to do with me. I'm not opposed to paying ten dollars more to help on that. But I am opposed, extremely opposed, to charging citizens to take garbage to the dump to help county because it's gonna end up all over West Hockoy Road, Palmetto Bluff, West River Road, all those areas where it's a big, huge tract of land. And I'm not cleaning it up. I'll call you. You can come clean it. It's my property, but I don't wanna have to work myself to death because nobody else wants to carry their garbage to the dump because it's gonna cost them. And I do pay my assessment fee. And I have a girlfriend that has two vacant lots, or two lots. One's a horse pasture, and she pays two assessment fees. And all this on the other lot is horses. So, what we're doing is not right. We need to go back to the board and look at it again and figure out who's doing what. And charge these people. They're coming from out of county. Don't charge me for their problem. It's not mine. It's theirs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Swanda Ruckowitz, you're next.
Good morning.
Good morning. I would just like to have something understood to me and probably everybody else, okay? So, you want the garbage to go to the road, and they're gonna come pick it up. Well, yeah, it was every two weeks. So now, Mr. Gass said, it will be every week that a truck will come, okay? Then, that's, where's that money gonna come from? Okay? Then, how do I put it this way so it'll come out right? Who's going to pay for when it's in our areas, thrown on private property, and all of this garbage? Who's gonna pick that up? That's a fee that's gonna have to be paid for by the county. Because I'm sure not gonna get out there and do it. Okay? I've lived here for thirty-two years. And before, they used to dump it out there. And we had the big dumpsters that came out there, and we cleaned it up. I'm not doing it again. I'm not gonna do that. So, he needs to explain to me where all this money's gonna come from. Because they're not gonna throw it, they're not gonna pay to have it dumped.
There is the negotiations with Waste Pro. And the contract is where the every week pickup. So there is no hidden costs and no additional fees to come from that.
For bulky waste, Chairman.
For bulky waste.
Do you think it's gonna go up, Mr. Flag?
No, ma'am.
Think about it.
That fee is set.
It will. It will. Believe me, it will.
You already negotiated a contract, Ms. Ruckowitz.
And how long is that contract?
It's just done with Waste Pro. Mr. Dan in the back of the room.
I know how long is the contract for?
Seven-year contract.
Long time.
Well, ten years really isn't a long time, if you think about it, okay? But, I mean, it's really gonna go up. I'm, you know...
That's why we're here. If everyone will continue to do just what you're doing, speak to us like you are.
Right.
We are listening. And we're also listening at, you know, the numbers that we're having to deal with. We're listening to our citizens. And you all are doing a marvelous job of presenting your opinions and expressing the facts and what you feel the consequences will be. And we are listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Glenn Adams, you're the next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Glenn Adams, and I live down on South Palm, here, about a mile from here. And I'm not an accountant or a rocket scientist, and I may not even be the sharpest knife in the drawer. But I've wondered, like in all commissions and just about all meetings of this sort nowadays, all the discussions revolve around ways to pay for something. And like the gentleman pointed out, somebody's gotta pay for the landfill. That's no doubt. We all know that. We accept it. So I've wondered, since I'm not an accountant, if you wanna laugh at me, go ahead. I've been laughed at before. But has anybody ever considered the possibility of maybe somehow bonding? The county, the landfill, like on a stock exchange, and selling shares to the public? If shares were something like, pick a number, ten bucks a share, I'd be more than glad to pay ten or twelve dollars, or shares, you know? I'd do that part so long as when I wanted to take my oak tree limbs, which have no trouble raining on me, to the dump free of charge, that I could do that because I would own my little piece of the landfill. As I say, if it's outrageous, say so. But thank you for giving me the chance to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Are there any other citizens who intended to speak on this issue that did not fill out a card, or you have a card with other issues on it? Good morning, sir.
John Spels, 106 Sister Lane. But I was at one of the meetings when they was talking about closing the facilities down as far as hauling the trash. And it was brought up that if they closed the facilities down, people would start dumping trash in the woods. Now, in other words, you done swip, flipped the whole script all the way around. Because I rode down Hunter Road yesterday, and it's in bad shape. And it's a shame, people are already starting to dump garbage along those dirt roads. Now, there's no way in the world you can tell me that y'all think this is gonna work, charging people when you got Hunter Road, you got West River Road, you got Bostwick, you got Interlaken, you have so much tree trash. If we had a hurricane or a tornado, would y'all still charge to dump all the tree debris? I've got several different properties that every now and then I like to go and clean up. But if you put that stuff at the road curve, those guys are not gonna fight with those tree limbs and stuff trying to get them in that garbage truck. And if they sit there over a week, all those leaves and stuff gonna fall off the limbs, and then it's an eyesore. You got people that got nice-looking communities that want to, when they clean it up, they wanna haul it out. But when y'all creating all of this here for revenue, you ain't doing nothing but creating more of a problem. I got property in the Mondex now, got trash bags on it due to the fact that it's a place way out of sight. People are loading the truck up, going just throw the bags off. Now, when code enforcement ever go out there, then they'll tell them, "I need to clean the place up." All to me, it really is, is a way that code enforcement can create more revenue of telling people they got to clean their yards because it's got to go to the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spels. Any other citizens to speak on this issue? Baggs, did you want to say something else? Well, if you're gonna say it, come and say it, if you're gonna say it.
Mr. Flag, I think Mr. Spels said everything. But I believe that if, like the gentleman over here said, he mentioned something about ten dollars. If there's something in the paper that come out about my garbage fee was gonna go up ten dollars, I wouldn't even be here today. But whenever, I may go to the dump, I may not go for a while. But nobody picks my garbage up. I haul my own garbage. I live on Letye Lane. You can write at it right now. It looks like a garbage dump because of the stray dogs, which I'm thinking of setting them telephones on fire about the stray dogs because I'm not putting my garbage out there. My neighborhood looked like that. Every, went Thursday morning, I go through blowing my horn to get dogs out of everybody else's garbage. They leave their garbage cans out and all. They drug all over the road and everything. Do I get any kind of kickback because I haul my own garbage off? No, sir. I've never had a garbage can out in front of my house.
But you're paying for the service.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Baggs. Any other citizen comments on this issue? We will close the public comments on the issue, and we will have now our commissioner discussions and deliberations. Commissioner Palisir?
Yes, sir. I've answered numerous calls in the last several weeks. And I don't think it's a perfect answer to the question. I think there's some trial and error that's gonna be involved in whatever we come to. But my theory has been that at the central landfill, which is there off of Seventeen North, that anybody that's taking their own garbage out there, yard debris, household garbage, whatever it is they're taking, they shouldn't be charged to dump. The convenience centers, that is a operation that has a fee attached to it. And I feel that that's something that the county can't incur, to operate those convenience centers at a no-charge basis. But when, there's a lot of people, and I'm guilty of it too, that the few things that I, the only thing I take to the dump is stuff I can't burn because I burn everything in my area out there as far as when the weather's right. But the operation of those convenience centers has a built-in cost, and I feel like that that has to be absorbed somewhere. Somebody has to pay for it. But as far as our central landfill, no matter where you are in the county, if you're willing to load it up and haul it, you should be able to dump for free. And I had a couple of other ideas. I had a man, Mr. Baggs, call me and told me that my idea of having to have anything other than a driver's license was asinine. Is that right, Mr. Baggs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You will have to have your tax certificate in there because you could have a...
No, no, I did think I said that if, you said it was gonna be inconvenient. I said that it would be a headlong for me to open my wallet up to pull two twenty-dollar bills out of it, that it wouldn't show you my driver's license. That's what the statement I made.
Well, your driver's license won't suffice. You're gonna have to have your tax certificate with it because there are people that have buddies that live out of county, have a buddy that lives in Putnam. Hey, make me a copy of your tax certificate and let, so I can go dump it at your landfill. There's people that's gonna look for a way to bend and break the law. It's just, this is the nature of some of the beat of some of those folks. But if you have the driver's license that matches the tax certificate, then that verifies that you are who you are and that you do pay taxes in this county. So I think both those documents would have to be made available. And I wouldn't be opposed to seeing us as Ms. Hancock, she and I talked yesterday on the phone, that in our tax bill, when it goes out, that you receive your 2016, 2017, Putnam County landfill access permit that would be affixed to your windshield. And either you could have that, or you'd have your driver's license and your tax certificate, which would gain you access into the landfill. And that's, that's my opinion on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Palisir. Mr. Harvey, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some people don't live in areas where we can burn, and I appreciate Mr. Palisir's comments. And out in Interlaken Lake Estates, you can't burn out there. The lots aren't big enough. They do, but it's not really designed for that. And let me assure you that it's not a convenience to go to the collection center. If you've ever been out to these collection centers, there are bars sticking up there. When you're unloading, you're hitting your head up against the bar because a pickup truck backed into one of the boxes one time. It's not very convenient at all. What's more convenient is to pile it up on the road, go in the house, take a bath, and put the game on. But I don't want my neighborhood looking like a pigpen. And I called around yesterday to Marion County. No mandatory curbside pickup, eighteen collection centers. Their assessment's eighty-seven dollars per dwelling. Hundred-dollar permit allows three people from out of town to dump waste into their landfill, into their collection agencies. Clay County, mandatory curbside, four collection centers, no out-of-towners. But illegal dumping costs them two-hundred thousand dollars a year. Yesterday, illegal dumping in Marion County, he said forty percent of a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar budget goes to enforcement of illegal dumping. Three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Alachua County, I have numerous emails, and I won't go into all of them, but they waived some tipping fees. And I asked, well, I was more referring to the enforcement means like Marion County has two deputies and spend almost three-hundred-and-sixty. And she told me, I said, "Would you say this is an issue based on no charge at the collection center?" And she told me, I said, would you say this is an issue based on no charge at the collection centers? Because they only charge six thousand dollars for waiving of tipping fees and they use keep Alachua beautiful like we used to use keep Putnam beautiful. And she said, yes, collection centers in all of our municipalities have curbside collection. That's what keeps the solid waste out of the side of the road. Yesterday, Commissioner Pelisier, I was out in your area. Mr. Jimmy Miller at Miller Blueberry Plantation has already been the recipient of a nice pile of oak, a dump truckload and garbage. Now, they didn't put it in front of his gate. That was nice of them not to do that. But it is off to the left-hand side. He's got to now spend his money to go out and clean that up or hire someone to do it or get a codes case put on him. That's not fair. I'm gonna tell you something. I have drove my truck into Violet Lake many years ago with keep Putnam beautiful, cleaning beer bottles and stuff out of the lake. I have drove around this county picking up trash every Saturday. I don't have the time or the appetite to go back out there and do that. And I tell you what broke me, was the guy was standing there and told me I missed a piece of paper when he was in his yard. And I said, fella, I don't even live here. I live five miles away. But from now on, you can clean up your mess. Folks, this is a bad, bad thing. We have not thought this through. We don't need to continue down this path and this commissioner doesn't support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris, you're next.
I think the recommendation from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee that we remove the convenience centers is the main thing that got me. It's such a long drive for the people in Crescent City and the people in Interlaken to go to the central landfill. And the idea of tearing down the center, something, you know, that we've built that is used and it's a convenience to our people, is very important to keep them. So I think arriving at the fees for dumping at the convenience centers was really kind of a compromise so that we could pay our bill with what the convenience centers cost and still maintain the service. I don't like charging for dumping. We were trying to keep the price down as low as possible. We were even trying in our discussions to not charge anything if it was just, you know, two or three bags. And just make it easy, if you forgot to put your garbage out and you don't want it sitting in the can in the yard for another week, you could drive out there and dump it. So it didn't seem so bad to make that compromise. But I really had not thought about the people that get things dumped in their yards that they didn't do and then them picking it up and then going to the, anywhere to dump it at a dump. And I don't know what to do about that, but that bothers me a lot. And I would like not to have to do this at all. But we do have to face reality that we have to pay our bills one way or another. So is there a better way? I would love to find it. I would love to hear a recommendation of a better way to do it so that we can still keep Putnam County clean and not have to charge if there's another way. So I wouldn't mind having another workshop, talking about it further and see if we can find a fairer way. Would there be a way that we could determine that someone is bringing in something that someone dumped in their yard? Or, I mean, how would you prove that?
Everybody's got a camera on their hip this day and time. That's what I did last, yesterday, Commissioner. I took it and sent it to Rick last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
So maybe there's another way. If, I would not mind workshop shopping as further ado. We're putting off the inevitable. We're gonna have to make a decision and do it. But I just want you to understand where we're coming from. We've got an expense. We've got to pay for it. If anyone has a better suggestion of how we could do it, I would, I would love to hear it. And I still wanted us to be able to do the small. You know, if someone didn't take their garbage in, they could take it to the dump at no charge. And it's ended up being like a two-dollar charge. But I'm certainly open to discussing it further.
Thank you, Commissioner Lightman.
Okay, I think I said a lot a minute ago, how I felt. I just don't think we're ready. I'm not criticizing anyone. Mr. Anderson, you bring up some great points. Financially, if we go into another workshop to vet out what we've learned from our citizens today and ourselves, does that mess us up for the coming year? That concerns me more than anything at this point. We definitely need more discussion on this subject.
Well, it does concern me too. I mean, you know, we're in the twelfth hour here, ready to adopt the final version of the budget tonight. And now you're talking about wanting to change, you know, a major fee structure that everyone, I thought, had agreed upon. I work for you. I'll do what you tell me to do. But I just think this is a poor time to be backing out of what we discussed in these budget meetings. I would rather see you come up with a plan during the next fiscal year to, if you're not happy with the system, revamp the whole system. I mean, if we need to do something different, you know, with how we collect and charge fees, I don't think that's something that's gonna be resolved in a week or two. In two weeks, we've got a new fiscal year that begins and rates and charges have got to be in effect. I've got to get something to the tax collector, you know, within the next few days as to what our rates are going to be. So, yes, sir, I'm very concerned about postponing this.
Mr. Larry?
You may feel differently or want to add to that.
Well, I mean, I think that the central area of concern is how to handle the individuals who will bring waste to the central landfill who have paid an assessment. I think clearly, everybody recognizes that people who are commercial enterprises, that the fees that are assessed, that are in existence and need to be implemented and enforced, that needs to be applied October the first. If I'm wrong, correct me, but I think, I don't think there's much debate about the fact that that needs to occur.
We need to talk. We got this kind of time, Bill. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Let's stop you right there for a moment. How do we feel?
I don't think we're in a time crunch at all. I mean, I hate to say that, but we have, this ordinance or supposed ordinance has been in effect for years. I was even out there and said that. And we haven't charged anybody from out of town. And if that's what's driving the train, four-hundred thousand dollars in expected revenue, three-hundred thousand of that from out-of-towners or commercial, we're talking a hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's not a big cost to your retained earnings. And I don't think we're in a big time crunch here. I asked when this first topic came up, let's wait till January, get this thing through. Let's work this thing out, all the bugs out. We've not worked the bugs out. We discussed all this stuff in workshops. So, there you go.
Mr. Harvey, but I think our CFO just explained to us the ripple effect if he's not with his other constitutional officers in the next few days. So I think time is at the, yes, we didn't arrive to a point of agreement yet, but there's no reason we can't do it right now. I mean, other commissioners, I mean, you're asking for that right now, but we have to compromise. Mr. Larry brings up a good point. I think commercial garbage should pay commercial. And I think Putnam County citizens, if they don't realize sometimes things are commercial, like you said, Mr. Gass, if a tree removal in your yard is exactly that, you're gonna, part of that cost is gonna be the whatever it costs to take it to the landfill. We can probably agree on that stuff as a community. But I think there is revenue that we have not realized yet from the, especially in the convenience centers, from those commercial entities, the weekend warriors and stuff. I know that the surrounding counties, especially St. John's County, it is a known fact in their neighborhoods, take it to Putnam. It's worth it. I know of one incident, a small deck on the back of a house costs eighty-nine bucks to throw away right there on 207 and I-95. That guy thought twice about coming over here. He really did. He didn't do it, but it's that easy is what I'm saying. I think there's a lot of money we're leaving on the table.
Mr. Larry?
Well, I think what I was trying to suggest, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that, what I gleaned from comments is that the primary concern is the assessment or the proposed assessment of the two-dollar and five-dollar charge for people who are paying the assessment already, who want to bring minor amounts of horticulture waste or garbage to the central landfill. All the other fees and charges against commercial or people doing land clearing or things of that nature are charges that ought to go into effect on October the first. And if all we want to deliberate about and reconsider is the two to five-dollar charge that has been suggested, I'm not so sure that the volume of revenue for that is gonna have a significant impact that wouldn't allow you to take a few weeks, if that's the case, to deliberate on how you want to handle that. But everything else needs to go into effect on October the first. And the assessment, I mean, that's gotta go because that's already been approved by the district and it's already, I mean, that can't be changed. That's set to go. So the only, if the only, if the question is about the two and the five-dollar fee and how we want to handle that relative to people already paying the assessment, you know, if we actually delayed the implementation of that little aspect of it and recognize the fact that what Mr. Gass recited as people meeting the definition of what the ordinance provides for in terms of, you know, what meets the definition of horticulture waste and garbage and those people continuing to bring that to the central landfill and just holding that little small charge in abeyance until such time as you have time to fully evaluate that, I think we can live with that. I don't think that's gonna be a significant detriment to the revenue flow. But put all other fees and charges in effect on October the first.
Yeah, we can't scrap the entire fee structure there. So my thoughts are, is that the residency, we're not looking to penalize anybody. That's first and foremost. I hear the rumor mill talking about because the county didn't do this, they're trying to do that. That is not the issue at all. The issue is trying to make sure that the business is operating in a sound fiscal manner. I certainly will support and recommend to each of us that the assessed residential disposal be put in indefinite abeyance until such time we can revisit and come up with an amicable plan that causes our citizens to know that, number one, our aim was to get that assessment as low as we could get it. And that's what we were focusing on. In the process of seeking to get the assessment at the lowest possible point there, the side effects of that by maintaining and keeping the convenience centers meant that we had to recoup some revenue from all concern that were actually coming physically to the facilities. I do support us not in any way, shape, form or fashion causing assessment, paying citizens any additional charges for bringing what, quote, they have already paid for to be picked up. So I think that we have time to vet that. So the recommendation is to put the assessed residential disposal in indefinite abeyance and then support the rest of the landfill fees and charges.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's just the first part, it says, assessed residential disposal. Do you mean for the tires part of it to remain?
Tire situation is different. Mr. Gass?
So I guess for-
That's been a given for years. I mean, the five, that's been in, that's been in effect for years.
Yeah, I think the tire situation have to remain. I think it was breaking news this morning that someone dropped off so many hundred thousand tons of tires in Flagler County. Thank God they didn't keep coming this way there. But that was on the news this morning. And those individuals who choose to break the law, I think that citizens do need to use their technology. And I'm not talking about the technology after the fact because you spied it a pow. Catch them in action so that the sheriff's department and local police departments can have some evidence. Don't get up in anybody's face, but shoot the tag. Mr. Gass, I think that what I'm hearing is the first paragraph under assessed residential disposal, that we actually put that in the indefinite abeyance. The section that's talking about the disposal of the tires, that is a continuation of an existing necessary policy. And I think that for now, we need that to remain, I mean, that needs to remain.
Yes. Here and after is what I'm hearing. Bring up the point, it still includes five free tires a year per resident.
Right. So the only thing that we're, we're actually, and we're not deleting it, but we're putting it on hold for further future discussions so that for the citizen that's going to the landfill this week, next week, next month, nothing really has changed for them if we do that, is what I'm hearing. Mr. Pelisier?
I can support it till we reach a consensus on the other.
Something else I want to bring to light that, just for you to be thinking on. If homeowner is doing their own owner-builder work or they're re-roofing their house, I don't feel like they should be assessed for going out there and dumping their scraps from their addition. If they have the ability to afford to hire a contractor to do it, then they certainly can afford to pay that fee if the contractor, somebody else is picking it up and taking it away for them. I think that should be something to think about.
It's kinda like that tree though, Commissioner Pelisier, that they're chopping down. I mean, what's the difference in the two? If you're generating commercial garbage, why is it-
Are they taking that tree down themselves or do they hire ABC tree company to take it down?
It's bulky waste that you don't want in front of your yard.
Well, if they're gonna take it to the central landfill, I think let them take it to the central landfill at no charge. If they want to take it to the convenience center, then there should be a fee. Because that's the problem, that's the problem that I'm hearing, is the cost is being incurred at the convenience centers.
We're gonna have a chance, if we all are in consensus, to go with what Mr. Larry just suggested and our chairman to discuss this. Because I have a, I'd like to discuss that with you further in a public setting. The, how can you charge for those satellite places and not the central? It's discriminatory.
Yeah, I would have that same concern, Commissioner Pelisier. We don't want any of the South Putnam, West Putnam, North Putnam citizens, which, I mean, the north would obviously use the central. But we don't want any of the citizens in the outlined areas to feel that they are in a substandard classification.
Didn't say they weren't.
Well, no, what I'm saying is if they're paying because they're closer to the convenience center and others are not paying because they're closer to central, then that could create same effect we have now.
I see your point, but the point I'm making is they're still doing the work for you by handling it themselves. It's not going through county employees or Waste Pro or whoever. It's them cleaning up their properties. Could be a neighborhood cleanup, who knows? But they're going to the expense of doing it. So if they're gonna take it to the central landfill, why should we charge them to dump there when they're doing the handling work? It's not costing us a dime.
Well, we, at the central, we are obviously having to bring it, I mean, at the south and west, we're having to bring it in.
Exactly.
With your blessing, Daniel from Waste Pro is here. He may have some comment that might be of some use to us.
He's really our contractor.
Yeah, he still may have some.
I think that in the next meeting, that we will properly notice when we're talking about that. I don't think we need to draw him into this. If we are all going to be satisfied on consensus that we're gonna deal with the disposal of the five tires per year that's currently here under the assessed section, all of the other sections as are presented. Any further, any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
To be clear now, we're taking out the top section where it says-
Just the first paragraph under assessed residential disposal that is being placed on indefinite abeyance is the recommendation.
Five-dollar charge.
The two-dollar and five-dollar charge is being put on indefinite, recommended to be put on indefinite abeyance under the assessed residential.
It says to a county disposal facilities. That includes convenience centers, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that-
Does that include the central landfill?
Our assessments are-
Every, all of our disposals.
All of our facilities? So we're not gonna charge any of our assessment holders any type of fee right now at the collection- So we're not going to charge any of our assessment holders any type of fee right now at the collection center or at the central landfill, correct?
Anywhere that's legally dumped.
Okay.
Or not?
Or not?
Or not?
Entertainer motion to that.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Proper motion and second, further discussion. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three? Yes. This time the commission will take a five-minute recess.
Been waiting patiently?
Patiently. Hey, I'm a patient guy.
Where are we at now? Where are we at on our?
We're in public comments.
Okay. Okay.
The shores of the St. Johns. Uh, my name is Sam Carr. I am, uh, live at one oh eight Riverside Drive, Satsuma. That would be channel marker number thirteen if you're on the river. Okay? Um, I'm here today to tell you, and I, I gave you the brochure detailing the, the fact that, uh, world-famous authors and scholars are coming to Palatka this, in October. And they were doing that as a result of the Bartram Trail Conference, uh, is, uh, has, has agreed to have their, um, biennial, uh, trip to our, our conference here in Palatka, which is really cool. Uh, this is something that's huge for the town. We're going to have three hundred people from outside of, uh, the state mainly coming into town and, uh, to, uh, to, uh, enjoy listening all about the, um, scholars and their research into Bartram Trail in Putnam County. The, the purpose of the conference is, is just that, is to talk about William Bartram, John Bartram on the St. Johns River, particularly here in Putnam County. So you have the brochure and, uh, and all of that. We'd certainly like to have y'all come out and then enjoy the show. The frolic on Saturday night is going to be incredible. It's going to be, uh, at the, uh, on the waterfront. We'll have live rattlesnakes. We'll have live alligators. We'll have, uh, turtles and we'll even have the long warrior there. And we'll have Billy Bartram there. So it'll be a really eventful thing and it'll be, uh, and we'll have some live music from local musicians and so forth. This is a real thing. This came about as a result of Nancy Harris's, um, um, Waterways Committee, uh, formed a subcommittee, started in September of two thousand and twelve. And, uh, lo and behold, uh, my dream has come true. It's amazing that this is going to be-
Can I add something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Sam came to our meeting and he had read a book about William Bartram. And he was so excited about it. He says, "We need to do something. We have so much of what he's written in his book in Putnam County." And I said, "Sam, let's form a committee and let's go." And he is the one that has brought that out. And he's done such a marvelous job and it's, it's going to help with nature-based tourism. It's going to bring people into the county and bring money in. And, uh, he just got started and it caught fire. So the speaker is from England, right?
She is, yeah, she is. The original speaker that we're having was the lady who gave us the digital images from the Natural History Museum of London. But she, uh, wasn't able to make it for personal reasons. And so instead we have Ms. Andrea Wolf, who is a world-renowned author. And, uh, she's done BBC specials and so forth. And, uh, she's going to be the, the keynote speaker on Friday night and Saturday. It's really amazing. We've got, we made a list of the books that the, uh, that the authors have written that'll be at this thing. And it's over fifteen books that they have written that will be represented there. And then there's been a new book written by a couple of, uh, uh, of, uh, scholars that, uh, is pertaining to, and, uh, just, just the St. Johns River. And, uh, that new book will be there too. It's really amazing. This is, this is going to be something that Putnam County's really never seen before because of the, it's, it's a worldwide organization that is coming here. It's really amazing. So, really cool.
Thank you, Sam, for your efforts.
So please come out and all that. And, you know, this is going to be Putnam County at its best. So, so this is really a positive thing.
Without the rattlesnake.
No, the rattlesnake will be there.
Hey, Billy Bartram's two hundred and seventy years old approximately. I can't wait to see him.
Yeah, really.
But the story's great. Uh, I also gave, gave y'all a map, okay? And, uh, I am, uh, also a, uh, the governor's appointment to the Florida Greenways and Trails Council. And I'm a governor's appointment to that council because I live on the river and I use the river as a trail. And so they, they, that's, they have all these people. There's twenty people on the council. Part of my responsibilities on that council is to make sure that, uh, that our, that the council's plans go forward. Part of the council's plans are the trail system that is, uh, that is here in, in, uh, in Florida. And, uh, uh, coming Thursday, they're having their major meeting of the year to make sure that the trails that we are planning on are still the trails that we want. And I just, uh, I just draw your attention to the map that you can't read. But the map that you can read, uh, shows that, uh, what they're, what they're doing is establishing these major corridors. And now there's money to actually start building this stuff. And, uh, you can see that, that Palatka Bridge is the gateway to one, two, three, four, five major, uh, what they call shared-use, non-motorized trails coming right through Palatka. So Palatka will be the trail capital of, uh, of northeast Florida. There's no doubt about it. So just to let you know, I'm representing the county at those meetings and all. And the work that has been done by the trails committees and so forth in the previous has put us in really good stead. Uh, Camp, Putnam County is recognized as being on top of it. We better be because again, there's money available through DOT now to start filling in these gaps. And we got to be ready when they, when they start building, so.
Mr. Carr, we certainly salute, uh, you, the committee as a whole. And this conference looked like it's really going to be, uh, a stately conference, uh, to be hosted here. And so please express our appreciation, uh, to all of the committee, uh, for the, the efforts to make this happen. I mean, it, it was a lot of homework done here. Do you have other committee members present?
Uh, no, well, he bailed out. Miss Nancy and, and, let's see, I don't think it's anybody, no. But, uh, Yvonne is, is part of that committee, uh, uh,
Ken Mahaffey.
Ken Mahaffey is the co-chair. Dean Campbell is part of that committee. Let's see, um, Shan Purithin is part of that committee, um, and so forth. There, there, it's incredible to sit there and see these people and their interest in actually doing, pulling this off. The other part that is encouraging to me is that the Bartram Trail Conference people, they don't, I'm the only one in the state of Florida, okay, that, that is, that is on that board. And, uh, and so, uh, they're all make comments to me like, "We can't wait to get there." Cause they want to see our natural resources. They want to see the, the, the places that Billy Bartram actually was. And, uh, we are, we are ground central for that. So it's really cool to see people outside of the county excited about coming to Putnam County.
Thank you so very much. Thank you for following up with us and we're making notes of the dates. Okay? Ms. Faith Barkman, you're next. Why didn't you tell me you was bringing some snakes up here?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm up here about the mowing of the county because those pictures I just gave you, the three with the black one, happened at Flamingo and First Street with the little tiny kids who are shorter than your weeds. That one snake, the black snake, came out two weeks ago today, rattler. One of those little kids could have been bit. So the little boy pushed the other little boy out and the mother sitting there thought they were going to fight. She get out, she saw the snake. She got it. Last, on Friday, your last sheet with the bottom page with all the rattlers came out Friday. Here all these little kids are. That one was six foot long. This county has not done something right that the weeds aren't being mowed and she told me to tell all of you this morning. If any one of those kids get hurt, she will sue each and every one of you because she pays her taxes. So something's wrong that you guys aren't looking at the head of engineering to make him do his job. I understand you had somebody come here and offer to come in here and clean up this county one time and help you. You all turned it down. There's something wrong. I pay my taxes too. I don't have any children here, but I care about those little kids. Yes, Mr. Lytle, Mrs. Harris was on the board. One little girl got hit. Help me get the light turn on. Alls I can do now is come and tell you, "These weeds are this high. Some of those little kids are only this high." Something's wrong. You guys got to fix this. Get somebody in here and do the mowing. Not only that, this morning on the news, they said September, October, November are the worst for allergies. What do you think are in those weeds? My husband's already on oxygen. He has three puffers. Now they put him on an allergy pill. How much more do you want this county to take? I'm ashamed of our county. Go back and look at the nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight budget where we had one engineer. This county was kept mowed every two weeks. It did not look like it looks right now. Go back and look at those figures. Wasn't even bringing in as much money as it is now. There's something wrong. Please look at them and do something.
Thank you. We are aware of mowing issues and action has been taken on it throughout the county. Thank you. Ms. Karen Chadwick, you're next.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to, uh, make sure you're aware of a, of a situation. I don't know what you can do or would do. Um, it's about the King's Grant project in, um, St. Johns County. I sent an email to everybody, um, all the commissioners about that about two weeks ago. And, um, it's been denied three times and every time they go to, it comes before the commissioners in St. Johns County gets a little closer to passing. And, um, the concern I have about it is in that if you read the fine print in their plan, they can't hook into the, this, the, um, the county sewage system because that treated wastewater goes into Matanzas River right now. So they don't want to keep adding to that. So they would have to do something else with the wastewater. And what the plan is, is to build a, um, retention pond that would handle about, uh, half a million gallons a day of wastewater. And then it would have a, um, a wet weather backup plan where if there's a lot of rain, that would, the waste would go, the treated waste would go into the, uh, Crescent Lake Drainage Basin. And that the plan isn't really specific. I don't know exactly where that would go, but there is a, a TMDL decided by DEP for, um, Crescent Lake. It's a, um, it's an impaired water body and there's a, a plan for that to reduce loading. And so this would be adding to the loading. So I don't see, like, if you look at the plan, and I'll send, I'll send the whole thing to you, make it easy. I sent it to, um, Commissioner Harvey already. You can see that the lake is divided by, um, Flagler and Putnam County. And Bunnell is their wastewater, treated wastewater is already going into Crescent Lake. And so we don't want to keep adding, you know, the basin is a big area, but the state has a plan to reduce loading, not add to it. And this development hasn't passed yet. Um, it probably will eventually because developers are kind of on a roll now. And they, the developers have spent a lot of money getting this plan together and hiring all their consultants. And I, they're not going to give up. So I don't know what you can do to, um, familiar, familiarize yourself with the situation and talk to the St. Johns County Commissioners and, and say, "Look, we're supposed to be reducing the loading, not adding to it." So, uh, typically what they've done is, is the new development hooks in, this is what I understand from my looking into it. They hook into the wastewater treatment facility that eventually ends up in the Matanzas River. And so they, they said, "You can't do that anymore." So they have to find alternative ways to get rid of their sewage. And so every time they, they come back with a revised plan, it's bigger and they've added more development to it. Can I keep going just for a minute?
Water Management District being at the table?
Yes, they, they said because as far as the potable water, the, uh, development wanted to hook, wanted to put in their own well field. And they said because of water quality, because they're in the area between Hastings and, um, the coast and they've got saltwater intrusion problems. And then the saltwater's coming up from the lower aquifer from us withdrawing so much water. So it's, you can't just put down a well like you used to be able to. Um, Jacksonville's moved three of their wells to the east side of the river. And then they pump, they put huge, it's, it's saltwater intrusion is the problem. So they said, "Well, you can just hook into the county, the municipality that already exists." Well, then that puts existing users at a risk for more saltwater intrusion. And they want to build, um, I think it's eight hundred homes now. And then they added a hospital and a, um, um, retirement facility, assisted living facility, shopping. And they just keep adding to it instead of reducing it, which I think is kind of surprising. But it's, we have a lot, our natural resources, we've got lots of good things going on. We don't want to add pollution, um, if we don't have to, you know, and I just wanted to make sure y'all are aware of that.
Mr. Lytle?
I've been talking with St. Johns County folks, including commissioners, on this, uh, development. And the problem with, with it at this point in Lake Crescent is identifying that corridor better. It's actually twenty miles in length. So they're having a hard time picturing runoff going from King's Grant to Lake Crescent. That's where we need to focus. It does happen and it will seep. Look at Silver Springs and the Marion County. You know, it can happen, but we really need to focus on that corridor. And, and they're not in our jurisdiction is the biggest problem. So we're going to have to go from a regional approach, um, our concerns on this, especially Crescent City and, and their commission.
Well, I think the, the key is there is a, a total maximum daily limit already set by DEP. And so when you keep adding these little bits here, these little, they're supposed to be reducing it, not adding to it. So in the, the map that I'll send to you, um, you can see how big the, the drainage basin is for Crescent Lake. It is huge. There's a lot of agricultural problems too. So they're trying to figure out ways to reduce it, not add to it. So I hope you can, you know, communicate and have, have some say so we can keep the water cleaner, not, not make it worse.
Mr. Pelosiere?
You made some mention that Flagler County is already dumping into Crescent Lake? Where is that taking place?
No, Matanzas River.
I thought you said Flagler.
Oh, um, Bunnell, yeah. The treated wastewater goes in.
Into Crescent Lake?
Yeah, that's what I've read in the reports, yeah. It's considered, it's in this, this whole, uh, um, TMDL report I can send to you and you can read about that. And you, there's, it's got contact information. You can ask Mary Pollak. Um, she's very familiar with this whole region. She does all the basin management action plans and TMDLs. I'll just, I don't know how she does it, but she knows everything about it.
Are, are you led to believe that it's the wastewater from the treatment facility in Bunnell that's getting to Crescent Lake?
That's what the TMDL report says, yeah.
It's quite a ways. I don't, I don't, I'm not denying it yet, but they're going to prove that one to me. That's a, that's a long distance.
It would be, as, you know, there's more development happening. Um, we just really need to pay attention to what's going where and there are, um, I hate to say, but in this political climate, you know, the regulations have been reduced and we're kind of back to the nineteen fifties mentality is like, "Well, just shuffle it around so we can get more jobs and build more buildings," you know? Um, that's kind of where things are going. So I just hope we can stay, uh, really in tune with, with what plans already in place, like the TMDL and the B maps and things like that. I mean, there, there are, if, if you're aware of it and take, make some effort, you can say, "Hey, wait, wait a minute. We can't keep going this direction."
One clarification, the TDMLs are the daily limits that go in. And most of this language is centered around the Hundred Year Storm. It's what would happen if that's overloaded. And Walton, that's what your, the city of Bunnell is experiencing. If we did have that hurricane come right back on us, it would just devastate Lake Crescent. And that's, it is real. It would happen.
Commissioner Harris?
I was just going to say, um, Walton, have you heard anything about that at Regional Planning Council?
I, I've not heard anything. She, um, I'm trying to remember, somebody else had contacted me about it. Uh, and I told him, "No, I hadn't heard anything." But I was under the impression you were saying their wastewater from their treatment plant was going into Crescent Lake, not-
I'll send this report to you that, where I got that from and, and see if you're, uh, reading it the same way. I mean, um, I volunteer with different groups. I go to a lot of meetings and try to learn about what's going on. Um, our, you know, our waterways are compromised and it's easy to not do anything, you know, or spend money. It's very expensive to, to remedy the situations. Uh, so, you know, I could use some help for sure to understand exactly what's going on and what, what's possibly coming in and, and making things better, not worse. We have so much going on now on our waterways. Um, I just hate to see them become more compromised if they don't have to.
Okay. Thank you very kindly for your presentation. We also had a public meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Could I make just one comment on this subject, please? As one that's kind of have a long view here on this, a board. Uh, and I remember the discussions back when, uh, the Mariposa Development was discussed and then later when the Walmart distribution was discussed. And both St. Johns and Volusia County had objections to those, uh, activities. And both Saint Johns and Volusia County had objections to those activities happen because there is capacity in a lot of areas, not only runoff, water withdrawal, wastewater treatment, road capacities. And they were all fighting for that capacity to be reserved for them. So I think it's important that we also fight for the capacity that is reserved for our development because we know we need it here. And whether it's improved residential opportunities or improved commercial opportunities, if we don't fight for those capacities because they get sucked up when they're sitting there. Other people use them. And particularly the development that they're talking about right now was one of the reasons that they didn't want Mariposa to happen because there was concurrency issues on Highway two oh six and two oh seven. And Mariposa would have taken that capacity from the concurrency rules back then, although we don't have those rules now. But it still is a capacity issue. And they didn't want that to happen because they were trying to reserve it for that corridor on two oh six between I ninety-five and two oh seven. So I think it's fair play for us to also turn that back around and say that we're not opposed to success anywhere, but there is limits that then get used that then we don't have any options in our county.
We need to look at any adverse effect that it would have. And if we snooze, we lose.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, Clerk for bringing that to the forefront. We had a speaker's card from Miss Shirley Edwards that was asking about the update on Hunter Road. We asked Public Works to get with her on that so that that can stay on the front burner, which it is. And we'll bring it up again in transportation meeting. Thank you so much. Any other public comments?
Robert Bly, a couple of things. I want to thank Chip Libel for all his hard work with the animal shelter. The, I'm, I'm telling you now, he's really been, really been working hard to get things done over there.
It's really a lot of really good volunteers, Robert, but thank you. We're, we're trying to come out of the dark ages and go into the light.
Now, I, I do hear that there are some new things that are coming down the pipeline. And that's a good thing to control our overpopulation. And I'm really looking forward to that.
Thank you for your interest.
I would like to welcome Mr. Manning. Appreciate your, your coming down to Putnam County to help us get through our legal issues. A question I, I had, and I don't expect to get an answer because I didn't give you time to adequately prepare, but how is it that we can afford two, two lawyers? I mean, we, a lot of counties, I believe a lot of you even said that a lot of counties don't even have their own lawyer. And, and here we are, the poorest county, and we got two. So just want to bring that up.
Apparently you're not aware of the retirement of Mr. Castleberry and that they do have to have some time so that he can be briefed on, his successor can be briefed on the current issues that we have?
I was aware that he was retiring.
Okay, so that answers your question, sir.
Okay. Something that might be a little confusing, when, when you look at the water flow of the Saint Johns River, it does flow north. And so when you're thinking about watersheds down south or even east, how does that get into Crescent Lake? Well, the way that it gets into Crescent Lake is through Hall Creek. And that's, that's where the basin drains. Hall Creek will flow north. And then Hall Creek flows into Crescent Lake. So that should answer how, how it's able to get.
Technically, it flows into Dead Lake, then into Crescent Lake.
Right. But, but anyway, that's, that's how it goes. It's just a, the river flows north.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Bly. Mr. Spels.
John Spels, one oh six Citrus Lane. I'm still here again to mention about Hunter Road. I was out there yesterday and I see the load of dirt they put on the cemetery road. And I can't understand why y'all keep continually putting dirt there instead of taking that eighteen inch covert out that's got water running from a thirty-two inch covert. And actually, it just runs completely over the road. Then they'll come and dump a bunch and I don't know whether it's got bubble gum in it, but it's a clay-like base mixture sand. I drove through it yesterday and it was just as soft and gushy. And then you got Crocker Swamp Road. I brought it up about six months ago. They had a covert on that dirt road right behind the racetrack. If you ride down there, it was collapsing in the middle. And somebody took the necessity to stick a plastic covert inside of that one with the hole in it. Every time it rained, it washed that dirt right out of that hole that they keep pushing dirt in. And you got a school bus travel down that rank, that road. Every time it rained, the runoff from the field runs completely over the top of the road. And then if you're on the far end, it runs all the way down that road. That whole road need to be upgraded at least about a foot and a half. And they need to take that small covert out, plus that one with the hole in it that they stuck the small one in, and put a new covert in there. Because every time they go there and grade, they take dirt from one end of the road to the other end of the road. And all the time, the road steady dropping. But if you just go out there and look and see what needs to be done and do it right and start patching it, because every time they get rain, all that fresh dirt they bring in get washed in the ditch. Then you get another grader come by and pull some more, get washed in the ditch. And the whole road is actually lower than the ditch along the field. So if you got engineers, you know, if they just do what they're supposed to do, you don't have to keep running back doing the same old thing.
Thank you, Mr. Spels. I'm about to close, public comments, item four. Item five, the consent agenda. I will read the captions of all of them. Those items that have an asterisk by them means that the administrator or designated director will give an explanation before the agenda is discussed. Item five A, list of committee minutes and recommendation distributed to become part of the record. B, list of correspondence distributed to become part of the record. C, administration agreement with Florida Drug Testing Incorporated not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for drug screening services for Putnam Adult Drug, Drug Code Operation, PATCO. D, is library compliance requirement for the Florida Department of State grant agreement for aid to libraries. E, Chamber of Commerce Tourist Development Council recommendations from September third, two thousand fifteen. F, general services, which is a list of surplus inventory. Item G, administration, general fund, emergency services, budget amendment resolution, ten thousand dollars to record revenue and allow for the expenditure of a donation from the Georgia Pacific Foundation Incorporated to convert a federal surplus property trailer into a mobile command post. H, administration, ship emergency repair assistance up to ten thousand dollars, Erlene Walker. I, planning and development resolution formalizing the Animal Control Advisory Committee. J, sanitation, task order number one thirty-eight, Jones Edmonds and Associates, one hundred and forty-two thousand eighty-five dollars, landfill permit compliance monitoring services for fiscal year fifteen sixteen. K, administration, ship annual closeout report certification for fiscal year twelve thirteen. L, Public Works, change order number six, Alexander's Landing Incorporated, twenty-five thousand dollars, Drayton Island ferry operations for October first, two thousand fifteen through September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. M, Public Works, change order number three, North Florida Emotions Incorporated, three hundred and four thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-five cent subcontracted for two thousand fourteen, dirt to pave stabilization activities at Dunn Street State Park. And it's, the source of these funds is a Department Environmental Protection grant. N, administration, addendum number sixteen, Joan Edmonds and Associates Incorporated, one hundred thousand dollars preliminary design to expand water system along East River Road. And again, this is a Florida legislative appropriation. O, Sheriff's Department, Florida Department of Transportation Highway Safety Funds Grant application, fifteen thousand dollars for overtime benefits and educational materials for the Putnam County Sheriff's Office Seat Belt Child Restraint Enforcement Team. P, administration, fee schedule resolution and exhibits for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Commissioners, you should note I, J, M, and N with asterisk. Are there any others that want explanation prior to discussion? Hearing none, we will go.
Mr. Chairman?
Whoa, whoa. You were kind of fast there, sir. I would like to, I wanted to talk about E and Ms. Jones said that Commissioner Libel could handle that.
I can handle that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll pull E.
M and N.
M and N? It's already asterisk on the M and N, sir.
Oh, okay. All right. Very well.
Okay, we'll let you start with E, Mr. Libel.
Yes, particular question, Commissioner Harvey?
No, just for the public, Commissioner Libel, that I want to know the, let the public know what the economic impact is for Putnam County with the bass tournament.
Okay. At the Tourism Development Council held last week, we announced a major announcement. In two thousand and sixteen, we will be hosting another Bass Master Elite Series. We will be the only location in all the United States, in the southeastern United States, including Georgia, South Carolina, all those places that are hosting one of these qualifiers. Basically, what that means is we'll have a hundred approximately of the top bass fishermen in the world right here in Putnam County. We've done two of these. Their bylaws won't let them come here every year. They have to give it a break. But every chance they get, they take us up on it because we produce more fans and a better setting for the world television set than any of the other locations. There's more interest in the series here in Putnam County than anywhere else. I'll give you some figures here. Our total room nights, when we get to the total economic impact, three thousand four hundred and eighty-three. That's based on double occupancy, of course, and that's for camera crews. And what contributes to that, not only do the anglers show up at the date prescribed, but they come and pre-fish because there's a lot of money on the line for this thing. It's a huge payday. And the economic downfall for Putnam County, it's our biggest, it's that simple. We're looking at, I, I could go through the whole thing, but when we're all said and done here, this is without a multiplier. This is not money spent outside of food, lodging, and say, gas and that sort of thing. You're at a million and a half, Mr. Harvey.
I agree.
And then it's been touted that there's a lot more money behind that. If you add the multiplier, I think you're getting into the millions again. I don't know the exact, that's a Dana question. But this thing's huge for us. Our downtown Palatka area is going through their renovations on the waterfront. It ought all be ready for that time. ESPN really likes us because we have underground utilities running all through the riverfront parks down there. So it's not a lot of work for them. They don't have to come in a month ahead and lay all this stuff out like they do in some of the other locations. So we do bass, bass tournaments well in Putnam County. And this is the granddaddy of them all, and it brings a lot of money. And we're, I'm really proud to announce that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very kindly, Mr. Pellicier.
Just to caveat off that, after the last time we hosted this event, I was at the kickoff dinner the night before for the fishermen. And then I worked the parking the next morning. And I talked to one of our local heroes, Troy Scroggins, and I, Terry, I'm sorry.
You better win, that's.
Get my Scroggins as Chris Cross. And I asked him, do we really shine that greatly compared to all the other locations in the U.S. where y'all travel? He said, by far. And, and he's a hometown boy. I said, well, tell me the truth because if we're doing something wrong that we need to fix, we don't know how to do it if we don't know it's broken. He said, y'all treat us and this entire group like kings. He said, we, we, they, they all talk about loving to come to Palatka the way we treat them and what we do for them when they're here. So we're doing the right thing.
Oh, yeah. Our media value just from ESPN is worth a half a million dollars.
Absolutely.
That's free worldwide. It really is. And it drives those freshwater fishermen back to our local fish camps, which they're all going through renovations now. We've got renegades we just worked with and some of them that are really coming up. And we're going to the next phase of, of tournament fishing in Florida. The biggest industry, of course, surrounds the coastline where eighty percent of our population lives. And saltwater tournaments are huge, but they're, the two biggest inland in state is Lake Okeechobee is one, Putnam County's two. And ironically, you got Lake Okeechobee and Lake George is the two biggest lakes in the state also. So, and all our tributaries and the mighty Saint Johns River provide for all this. And this, this is where we're taking a natural resource and using it to our advantage, the way it should be.
Just, just a little bit more out of that, I do, now that I'm thinking about it, Cliff Prince, one of our local heroes also, he, he, same thing. He, I, I got to him individually and they both gave me the same thing, that we, we are the number one spot. He said, the bass fishermen talk about, when are we going back to Putnam?
They call us Jurassic Park of the circus. Nowhere else do they catch bass this big.
Stacy, you're looking at us kind of funny, Mr. Turner.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking about the bass and I'm.
I can see that. I can see that. You're going to love this, this.
But that's, that's my announcement. Commissioner Harvey, thank you for taking it off the consent agenda.
Thank you for drilling, drilling down on it. And I'm sure that the closer we get to time, that we're going to have more and more to share. Okay, planning and development, just a little bit of discussion about the resolution formalizing the Animal Control Advisory Committee. Is that you or is that?
I'll, I'll take it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been some comments in the past expressing a little bit of a concern about the lack of formalization relative to the Animal Control Advisory Committee. A resolution has been prepared by planning and development that would actually formalize the Animal Control Advisory Committee suggested to consist of nine members initially appointed for staggered terms that thereafter would allow for regular appointments of them to consist of three-year terms on a regular basis. That, that nine-member committee would consist of, generally consists of, be suggested to consist of people who are, have knowledge of animals, veterinarians, animal behaviorists, or farmers who are familiar with large animals or other, other individuals who might have a great interest in, in animals and animal control services. So this would be an advisory committee in nature to advise the board on matters relative to animal control so this resolution would formally establish the Animal Control Advisory Committee.
Hey, just before you move forward, Mr. Haven, you had a question on this particular item. You've heard the explanation. Is it anything else you need to know about item J? Oh, I'm sorry, J. We'll get to J next. Thank you.
Well, item J is a task order for Jones Edmonds and Associates for the landfill permit compliance monitoring services for the upcoming fiscal year. Those monitoring services consist of two semi-annual sampling and testing of groundwater and surface water at the central landfill, both the active and closed cells, the same at the Huntington closed landfill, and the preparation of compliance monitoring reports to DEP as are required by law. This would not be a one-time service. It would be paid out, be paid out over the course of the year. But it's an engineering service that has been provided on an annual basis for a number of years as required by our permit under, issued by DEP.
Thank you. Mr. Haven, if you'll come forward for your question.
On this item, I see there's going to be four tests on the Huntington landfill. Oh, yeah, five tests, actually. Two semi-anual water, groundwater, two semi-annual surface water, and one annual gas condensation thing. I remember just in recent history, it cost us eighty-three thousand dollars for testing out there at the Huntington landfill. I mean, how long are the tests and all this stuff going to go on with the landfill?
As long as there is a landfill.
Pardon?
As long as there is a landfill, it's going to continue to go on. It's going to happen as long as Putnam County owns a landfill and operates it.
I suppose, I'm wondering, here we're trying to reduce landfill costs and the cost to citizens, and I'm assuming this one hundred forty-two thousand is part of that cost rolled into the landfill that we're paying for. Is there somebody else that might be able to do these tests cheaper? I mean, every time we turn around, we see Jones Edmonds is doing something for the county and the fees just seem exorbitant. Do we get a, somebody else bidding on what's going to cost or they just get all the contracts?
Well, it's not just to get on the contract. The type of contract that we have with them, the contract is properly vetted. But when you're dealing with this type of a contractor, you don't switch them out every year. I mean, you certainly have to have some continuity in the professional services that are provided under the work scope that you have here. Otherwise, you got to have people, mobilization has to take place each time you switch horses. Midstream, Mr. Leary can drill down on that a little further if necessary.
Yeah, but you're, you're paying one hundred forty-two thousand for seven tests?
Well, I mean, it's not a blood test at the lab. Well, I mean, it's not a blood test at the laboratory at the local hospital. I mean, it's, it's, uh, a specialized, uh, test. Uh, the prices that Jones Edmonds are charging is competitive and it is based upon reasonable fees for the type of services that they are providing.
I think it's exorbitant.
Thank you so much for your opinion, sir. All right, we will move forward to the next item, which would be item M.
Item M, sir, is a, is a change order to an existing, uh, contract. Uh, this particular change order is required due to the fact, uh, that if I can refresh your memories a little bit, uh, several months back, uh, a representative from the Friends of Dunn Creek came before you and prevailed upon you to, uh, undertake a contract with DEP that would enable, uh, DEP to, uh, have an entrance road to the Dunn's Creek State Park, uh, added to that facility. Um, there were, we thought, options for DEP to, uh, enter into a contract independently, and the state of Florida could handle this themselves. However, as it turned out, they wanted to and preferred to, uh, uh, enter into a contract with the county, which we executed in March of two thousand and fifteen, uh, to, uh, have the, our existing contractor, uh, do this work, uh, merely as an accommodation to DEP. So, that's why we're having to go through the process of, uh, uh, adding this change order to that contract and extend the contract date to December the eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, in order that work can be done satisfactory to DEP at the, at the Dunn's Creek Park. All of this work is, uh, of course, being provided for through a DEP grant, uh, as reflected in the agreement executed in March of two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Libel.
Uh, Mr. Leary, on, as far as, uh, the warranty of this work and, and any future warranties or anything to do with it, is the county responsible beyond this contract when it's completed?
Well, there's a performance bond associated with it, and I would think, I mean, from administrative perspective, if DEP finds any deficiencies in the work moving forward, uh, under that performance bond, what we will do is encourage them to discuss that with the contractor. I mean, that...
Very well. So, that, that's my whole question. Will that, if we got to that point, will that be on one-on-one?
Technically, we're the contractor. We're gonna encourage them to discuss it with the party that did the work.
Very well. I, I just, I don't think we should be responsible.
I don't think so either, and that's why we wanted to avoid this contract altogether, but unfortunately, uh, you know, it didn't turn out that way.
We're dealing with a lot of sand out there. Um, I'm not a fan of this process, but obviously I'm not an expert either. Somebody sees good in it, but, um, I, I just suspect we might have trouble down the road on this, and I sure don't want us in the middle of it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I concur. Um, I sent you an email yesterday, Mr. Leary, about my concerns about this, and you expressed your same sentiment. Um, are we going to be doing the testing now that we have the boring machines and all? Because I, I, I do not want to see us, no?
I, I don't think we have any intention of doing that. The work, the work that's being done, uh, is being done at the behest of DEP and being done according to their instructions to the, the con- not hesitate, said contractor, because we are technically the contractor because we entered into the agreement with DEP, but, but DEP is the, is the entity that prescribed what they wanted done out there, and they have conveyed that directly to the, to the entity performing the work.
Would it be prudent for us to contact DEP and let them know of our past problems?
Uh, perhaps it would be, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rick Haven?
The three hundred and four thousand six hundred and not twenty-nine dollars fifty-five cents, is that county funds or is that a grant?
It's a total grant from DEP.
One hundred percent, state.
So, it's not our money?
No, sir.
Well, it is, but not yet.
Um, my next question is, it seems like every time we have a, a contractor doing work, whether it's the jail or, or roadwork, uh, after the contract's sent out, then we have contingency things. Is this, uh, extra eighteen thousand dollars not considered in the original contract, or has there been a change in how much road is gonna be done?
It's a change order that DEP itself agreed to pay for in work that they wanted to have performed by the, the entity doing the roadwork, and they've agreed to pay for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Uh, Mr. Leary, item P, uh, fee schedule resolution and exhibits, uh, we have a comment card from Mr. Tim Hotelling. If you'll come and tell us precisely what part of that you would like us to address.
Did you want some comment on N as well?
Sir?
You had N, I think, as well, that you wanted some comment on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Let's do N and stand by one second.
Well, N is, as, if you recall, we received, the county received a legislative appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the preliminary design and permitting of the extension of a water line down East River Road. Uh, the state is not, they're a little bit slow in processing the formal agreements, uh, because there's a lot of them around the state, I presume, but what they've done, they've authorized us to go ahead and proceed to initiate that work, uh, and that they will reimburse us for, uh, costs incurred after July the first, which of course, we're certainly past that date now, uh, and they'll get the agreements to us formally, uh, in, in coming weeks. Uh, so this hundred thousand dollars is merely to get the contractor started on that work, so hopefully the work can be pretty well completed, uh, and in place and allow our, uh, allow our, uh, lobbyists to pursue construction funds in the upcoming, uh, session of the legislature. So, this is just to get them started.
Mr. Libel?
Paid for by the legislative appropriation.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you, Mr. Leary, but that, that, my question leads from those funds we're talking about. I understand phase one, two, through this design and where it's going, but we started from Yelvington with a pipe, both sewer and water, and we went down the eastern side of seventeen south. Uh, will, will that come into phase, become phase three, or will any monies be secured out of this, uh, effort to fund primarily the, we had Dr. Smith from the veterinarian equipment.
No, sir.
We're gonna be short of that.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, all, all that money has been exhausted.
Okay. So, we gotta find future monies to complete that task. All right, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Okay, item P, it's Tim Hotelling.
Good day. Hi, Tim Hotelling, San Mateo. Um, I apologize. I'd put in a request to speak on the previous matter also, the, uh, change order three on, out at Dunn's Creek Park. To my knowledge, we only have one inspector that covers asphalt, uh, roads to verify it and to put it all together, although we got a couple new guys that are helping. Mr. Manning would do real well to pay attention to what went on in the past history on this matter, and I'm wondering why we're doing favors for DEP, uh, when we don't have adequate resources to, to, um, quality control, especially on contractors that have a known demonstrated track record of things that in my estimation he should go to jail for. But, um, going on to item P, I would just like to bring to your attention that, uh, that fee schedule includes, uh, the tipping fees and all of that stuff that y'all talked about earlier, and you might wanna, um, do whatever you have to do to pull that out of order because you just made a, a decision earlier today. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to answer one of the questions, um, that he asked about. Um, the Dunn's Creek State Park has a terrific citizen service organization, a CSO. Uh, Sam Carr is one of the ones that serves on it. And we think that if, if they weren't there, they have spent a lot of time putting the dirt road in that's there, building a kiosk, uh, promoting that park. That park would just sit there forever, I think, if we didn't have the active group of CSO citizens giving of their time and raising money and doing what they can. And so, they asked to have that road paved, and they came to us and they asked us, would we help with that contract? Um, you know, and so it was DEP and the citizen service organization. So, it's for the benefit of our citizens and to have that park become something and to have improvements.
Yes, I, I wholeheartedly agree. My only point is, if you spend a lot of money on bad product and you end up having to face the same problems over again because you have to rebuild the same thing in, in a hot second rather than twenty years, it's sort of counterproductive. Has, has, has nothing to do with what you say, and I, I, yay, 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 but, uh...
Okay, you wondered why we were doing...
When peoples are supposed, have a, a record of supposedly building roads, but don't build roads, and you pay them to build roads, it's foolish to pay them to build some more roads unless you got somebody to watch to make sure that they build the roads.
I think you will find out that the date of that contract precedes any issues that were brought to our attention. Mr. Leary, you wanted to share something?
Yes, sir. Uh, relative to item P and the fees and charges schedule, uh, to Mr. Hotelling's comment, uh, it, we do need to, uh, delete from that fees and charges schedule exhibit one. Uh, that, that is not, number one, that's not the correct fees and charges for solid waste, and number two, I think that's already been adopted by the solid waste district, so I don't think it needs to be incorporated in this anyway.
Okay, so exhibit I. Exhibit I on page, uh, one thirty-six?
Just take out one, page one thirty-six, Mr. Chairman?
It's, it, yes, one pa- page one thirty-six, right.
Okay.
Needs to be deleted.
All right. Exhibit I, solid waste, special assessment tipping fees need to be deleted from this, um, approval, is what you're saying?
Correctly.
Okay. Any further discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on this current packet that we're working on, item P, uh, page one eleven, um, I sent, contacted Mr. Hammond yesterday. We had a real estate agent who contacted me who was very upset that there would be a phone charge, well, a charge of thirty-five dollars to answer a question on the phone. And Mr. Hammond, I'd like to ask you to come up, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And address that situation for our public to know, uh, what the actual answer to that is.
And I believe the, uh, case that you're speaking about is that the question is not a question that can be answered on the phone. It's something that requires additional work in order to do that. So, as I think I told you in an email yesterday, we don't, we try not to make any specific determination at all on the phone. We ask people to come in, see us, make an appointment, because usually it takes some time to do some research, to answer the questions that most people have.
I think her concern was just if there was a codes case on it, and her employer has given her minimal time to get this answered, and, and that's why I said to you, maybe we could just put it on the internet for the public to see, and she could pull it up herself.
And we could've told her whether there was a code case or not, but we could not have told her the amounts of any liens or, you know, current, uh, accrued amounts.
I got that same call, and I think all she wanted to know was, is there, didn't want to know what it was, just is there a codes case, period?
And again, it just depends on who's available, who can answer that. There's a small group of, small handful of people in the department that can actually answer that question.
But there's no charge for answering that question if there's a codes case?
No, there's not.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Proper motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like saying, hearing none. Motion carries.
Excluding item I?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The record should reflect that the I, exhibit I, uh, in, under administration fee schedule resolution is an exclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris. Item six, Mr. Ed McClellan, requested name new jail expansion area in honor of late Sheriff E. Walton Pelosiere Senior. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, I knew Walt Pelosiere for many years when I was a child, and, uh, as the director of Road Heaver Borridge Ranch, and I just found that he is probably one of the most outstanding public servants that I've ever known, and I feel like it would be most appropriate that, uh, Putnam County honor him. He was the second oldest, longest, not old, longest-serving sheriff in the state of Florida, and, uh, he brought much recognition to, uh, our county. He was the president of the National Sheriff's Association, as well as the Florida Sheriff's Association on many occasions. So, I don't know what the procedure is to name it, but, uh, I would certainly recommend it. I guess Walton would have to accuse himself because, uh...
He might be kin to him.
But he knows how well his father did, and I think it's, uh, whatever you have to do to do it, I hope you will.
Mr. Chairman?
However honored I am by Mr. McCullin's, um, recommendation, uh, I feel appropriate that, uh, any future discussions or decisions related to this issue that I will have to sit out, but I'm, I'm very honored, Mr. McCullin. Thank you.
Say it.
I might have to sit out, too. He locked me up one time.
Well, hey, all of us might have that problem.
Did you deserve it, Commissioner?
I agree with everything you said.
All right.
That is a joke.
I don't know what the procedure is, Mr. Chairman, because I can't make a motion, but I sure hope y'all do it quick. Thank you.
All right. I'm not sure what the procedures are to name a public facility in honor of an individual, but I'm sure that if you provide the, uh, the resume, I know you mentioned some things, and I'm sure that that would be easily accessible. Um, I think it'll go through a process. It needs to certainly be vetted, uh, through, uh, an open public process because any time you're naming a facility in honor of or in memory of or in any way, shape, form, or fashion, we want to make sure that it's properly vetted, and, um, we will refer back to the administrator as well as our attorney to, uh, I guess, come up with a procedure because, again, who knows whether any other citizen think that another name should be there, and so we don't want to name it and, and then have to go through a process of un-naming it.
Mr. Chairman, I could, I'd like to make, uh, uh, or ask if we can get it on the next, uh, scheduled workshop, Mr. Leary, for discussion.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds like a plan. Okay?
Thank you.
All righty. All right, we have a nine fifty-five proposed road clo- closing public hearing, and, uh, according to the, uh, the clock is well past nine fifty-five, uh, but there's a resolution, uh, vacating a portion of Paul Drive in a lock-in Lake Estates, Dunham Woods, Unit Eighteen. Is there any setup time required, uh, for that at all or just what we have before us? This is a public hearing. Do we have individuals that are here specifically, uh, for, uh, the issue on, uh, Paul Drive? Okay?
He's in favor.
Yes, sir. Or Mr. Mullins? All righty. Okay, uh, Mr. Jacobovitch, if you'll present the case?
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
This is a, a little bit unusual. Uh, we have a road that everybody on the road wants us to vacate. Um, we got a request to, to vacate a portion of Paul Drive. Um, all of the residents that live there all have access on other roads, so they don't need this road. And you can see in your package, there are pictures of the road. It does exist. It's a, like a single-lane dirt road. Um, we have no problem because it, it generally just serves the residents who have asked us to vacate the road. Uh, there was one provision that they each get us a, uh, a, a clay electric utility easement, which they have, and with that, um, staff recommends vacating that. And what would happen is we, we, um, is our, um, estimate that each of the owners who have asked for us to vacate it would then receive those portions of the road adjacent to their properties.
This is an open public hearing. Do we have any citizens, um, again, that have any concerns, direct or indirect, on this project? Mr. Mullins, are you far against this? I'm just teasing you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Jacobovitch, looking at the map, the last page of what you gave us, on the west side of the properties, is that a road? It's just an OR book and page listed.
Yes, there is a road there.
So, that is a county road. Okay, thanks. Just want to make sure it wasn't an easement and we were giving them, you know, less access than what...
Just want to make sure it wasn't an easement and we were giving them, you know, less access than what they had.
Okay, does our legal department have any concerns? Seeing none?
Yeah.
Hearing none? What is the pleasure of this commission, public hearing is closed, Commissioners?
Ex parte.
Is, is there need to go through ex parte on that?
Yeah, there's not.
The attorney said no, so I'm gonna take his advice.
Okay, good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we.
All right, proper motion and a second, further discussion? Further discussion?
I was gonna make a motion.
All right.
I'm sorry.
District five?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District three, yes. Okay. Okay, code enforcement, John Salman, Senior Planner, code enforcement cases, Case Nine A. Number Nine A on the agenda, fine reduction request, two thousand thirteen dash double oh five sixteen fifteen oh three, Barton Road. Catherine Dill, is anyone here representing, uh, this case, fifteen oh three Barton Road?
No, her son lives in Texas.
Okay.
He, uh, there's an email attached to this that, uh, he sent, uh, previously. Property was first seen on October ninth, two thousand thirteen, the house was deemed unsafe. There was also a care premises issue. Uh, the owner, uh, Mrs. Dill, was in the nursing home at the time. Uh, notice of violation hearing was sent out on April tenth, two thousand fourteen. The special magistrate heard the case on June nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, and he found the property to be in violation and gave the owner until, uh, actually June nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, I'm sorry. Um, the, uh, gave the owner until July thirtieth to, uh, bring the property in compliance or twenty-five dollar fine day would commence. At some point in that, uh, time period, Mr. Dill died. Uh, the case went back before the special magistrate on September eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, and he found the property to still be in violation and then ordered the lien to be attached. Uh, Mr. Paul Dill, her son, and called and indicated that they were, uh, in probate with the, uh, the, uh, issue of the house. And, uh, he was frustrated, uh, because he felt that the husband he, uh, should have been responsible for taking care of the problem, but Mrs. Dill owned the property on her own. And once through probate, uh, Mr. Dill, uh, had the, uh, property demolished and cleaned up with permits, he requested a fine reduction hearing. Um, the issue was, uh, went before the special magistrate, uh, and he recommended the county accept nine hundred and seventy-six dollars in lieu of nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-dollar and fifty cent, uh, fine plus a hundred dollar administrative fee if it's paid within ninety days. The nine hundred and seventy-six dollars is the amount, uh, of, uh, costs that the county has in it.
Thank you, Mr. Salmons, we have a recommendation from the special magistrate and the staff that we accept the nine hundred and seventy-six dollars in lieu of the nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-dollar and fifty cent plus a one hundred dollar administrative fee. What is the pleasure of this commission?
So move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Proper motion?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion carries. Next fine reduction requ- request, two thousand four zero eleven eighty-two, one oh six M Court, Patricia Singleton. Is there anyone here representing this case? Ma'am, please just come a little bit closer while the case is being presented.
Uh, this property was first seen on December fourteenth, two thousand four. There was a large amount of trash and debris, cars, boats, and appliances on the property. Uh, notice of violation was sent on in December seventeenth, two thousand four, which gave the owner sixty days to come into compliance. Uh, nothing much happened. The case went before the special magistrate on April twentieth, two thousand sixteen, and he gave the owner until June twenty-sixth, two thousand and six. I keep trying to make it.
Twenty thousand sixteen, that was quite an extension.
Two thousand six.
Okay.
Um, uh, Ms. Singleton, who was Mrs. Essex at the time, uh, was separated from her husband and she started paying the administrative fee a little bit at a time. Uh, Ms. Singleton, uh, removed a significant amount of trash and debris over the next several months. Uh, most of the problem was resolved, but there was still a large piece of heavy equipment on the property. Uh, bank started foreclosure proceedings, uh, we were told, then evidently Ms. Singleton resolved that issue with the bank, uh, because she still owns it. And she, uh, got the property in compliance, requested a fine reduction. The issue went before the special magistrate and he recommended, uh, that the county accept eight hundred dollars, uh, the, uh, actual costs were nine hundred dollars, but, uh, after discussion with, uh, Ms. Singleton, uh, both, uh, the special magistrate and staff concurred that eight hundred dollars, uh, was, uh, appropriate. Uh, in lieu of the eighty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollar fine if it's paid within ninety days, and she is here.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Salmons. Ms. Singleton, if you would just come forward, please be at ease, we just have a couple of questions. Want you to verify that you are who we say, we think you are, you are Ms. Patricia Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Singleton, do you agree with the summary highlights that was presented by Mr. Salmons?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any objections to the recommended action?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions or comments from the commission? We have a recommended action that the county concur with the recommendation of the special magistrate and accept eight hundred dollars in lieu of the eighty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollar fine if paid within ninety days, which is December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. What's the pleasure of this commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton, for cleaning that property.
And I'm sorry that you had to go through all you had to go through to get to where you are, but thank you. Mr. Salmons, thank you for your presentation, uh, as well, and stop hitting them extra zeros on the, yeah, all right. Okay, county administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have anything other than the appointments, but I believe Mr. Overterf wanted to have a word about the, uh, appointment to the canvassing board.
All right, supervisory election, Mr. Overterf, if you would come forward?
Good morning. Just real briefly, uh, first off, I just wanted to welcome Mr. Manning. I look forward to working with you during the next election cycle. I also want to make sure that Mr. Castleberry knows how much the elections office appreciates all his work over the last several years. Uh, he's, he's been a very knowledgeable man, he's also has a good demeanor about him that makes all of us at the elections office feel uh, very comfortable when he's been with us, and, uh, I know that my previous, uh, predecessor felt the same way. So Russ, I appreciate it and just wish you and Terry the best in retirement, so. The other item that I wanted to mention to you was what he just mentioned about that it is time for us to determine which one of you will be our, uh, commissioner for the canvassing board. And we also by law have to appoint an alternate, uh, as we've done in the last couple of years. The reason I wanted to mention just for a couple of seconds about it is the fact that next year is our busiest year by far. Uh, we have the three big elections next year, so we are looking at twenty-two to twenty-five meetings that you'll need to be at, at least the actual member, that the alternate doesn't unless the member can't be there. But I just wanted to mention that to you so that as you're thinking about who wants to do it, that it is an undertaking besides all the other meetings that you all have, uh, and the obligations that you have to do. We also have, uh, coming up, uh, the first or the second week of, uh, January, uh, a required meeting that we have to go to down in Orlando. And I've already got Mr. Manning's application and I'll send in yours once we get whoever the alternate and the actual member is. So there's a lot of things that we've got coming up that'll hit really quick here, starting the first of next year. And I just wanted to approach you all and give you time to mark whoever on the calendar so that you've got time to prepare for that, uh, item also. So, uh, if you have any questions, fine, if not, that'll be it, but I do just want to, I want to thank Walton for his service too. Uh, he's been very diligent in being there and being, making all the meetings and it does add to it because if there's three members and one of them's out and then you have a controversy, then there's no way to, to make a decision because of it, so, thank you.
I did enjoy that, by the way, that was a very learning experience, I highly recommend.
One question I have, Mr. Overterf, is it still at the Florida Mall next to the Brazilian Steakhouse? I don't want it then.
Is that the Carri- Caribbean or something like that, they, they move it?
Do they?
Yeah, type deal. Two years ago, I think we were there, weren't we, Nancy?
Well, that's a little caveat you got, you.
Yeah.
Besides your meeting, you could just walk right out of the meeting room into this giant mall, and it is giant.
Right.
That was pretty neat, but anyhow, all good things must come to an end.
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris? Head in the comments on that.
What did you say?
You wanted to talk some more about that?
No, I'm okay with that.
Okay, uh, what, what timeline do you want those people named? We know a couple of people don't qualify. All right. I mean, it has to be a person that's not on the ballot.
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Overterf, what's the timeline, you need the name? Names?
As soon as it matters so that whoever just has time, uh, especially if you want to go down the night before, then I've got to have time to make reservations and stuff. Plus they want the applications in as soon as we can, just so that the organization knows how many are coming from all over the state, you know, that kind of thing. You know, I don't, I'm not saying it has to be today, but whatever's convenient and you want.
I'm seeing them jumping up and down, volunteering.
You want to do it?
I'd love to do it, but that's up to the board.
I have no problem with it.
Alternate.
I could be the alternate.
Let's get it over with.
Nominate Mr. Harvey to be the primary and Mr. Libley to be the alternate.
Yes, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
You're done.
Are there any other appointments? We have, um.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, I spoke with Margaret Zoner and she's willing to continue serving. So I make a motion, we reappoint her.
Proper motion to, um, reappoint Ms. Margaret Zoner?
Second, then?
Second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And you are working on the employer representative?
Yes.
Okay, better place.
Likewise, don't have anybody yet.
He working. Okay, Mr. Administrator, anything else?
No, sir, I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the county attorney.
Old name.
Let's start with the new and then we'll go to the old.
Um, I don't have anything additional to add other to, uh, other than, um, uh, let's not, Mr. Castleberry, um, does need to address, um, a, uh, a mediation, um, event that was held recently, and I'll let him take it from there.
Okay, uh, Mr. Castleberry, we didn't mean to call you old as in age there, but I mean, you know, some people get fine with age anyway, so.
No, no offense taken.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, this item the board's very familiar with is, uh, asking the board for authority to, uh, accept a settlement we reached at mediation a few weeks ago in Orlando. Actually, Mr. Manning took a vacation day from his job in Osceola and attended the mediation with us. Uh, it relates to the mining contract at the central landfill. Uh, uh, by way of a little bit of background, when we, when the county first decided to enter into or, or to actually mine that old, uh, landfill, uh, Jones Edmonds estimated that the project would cost us about two point nine million dollars. We went out for bid, the bid, the low bid was approximately two million, but we need to keep in mind that most of that two million dollars was based on a unit price, a series of unit price items because we did not know what we would encounter when we dug into that old landfill. Uh, so we had a two million dollar bid and an estimated cost of two point nine. At, as the project progressed, the contractor encountered a lot more special waste than was anticipated, which drove the, uh, volume up and the costs up. Uh, special waste meaning primarily tires and white goods. Uh, the estimate for tires was one hundred tons, and I think there was closer to six thousand tons of tires discovered. Uh, the other claim related to the fact that in the landfill, the top layer wa- was what they call clean soil. That's very easy, the contractor digs it out, puts it in a pile, Mr. Gass can use it for daily fill, et cetera. They encountered a whole lot less clean soil than anticipated and a whole lot more reclaimed soil and a- actual, uh, solid waste. So we went to me, we knew, we knew, uh, early on in the contract that, uh, we were going to owe the contractor money. Uh, at mediation, the contractor claimed one point seven million, uh, in addition to the contract price. We were able to mediate it down to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which if you add the seven seventy-five to the two million dollar contract, two million seven seventy-five, which is still less than the original estimate of two point nine by John, by Jones Edmonds. So it was simply a matter of, it was a unit price contract, we knew that there was going to be a true up or a reconciliation at the end of the contract based on the actual volumes encountered. Uh, it could just as easily gone the other way if they had discovered less special waste and more clean soil, we'd be doing a change order to reduce the contract price. However, this is the way it came out, but we knew all along there would be a true up, so. Uh, we have tend to, we have, uh, accept that we agreed at mediation to pay the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars subject to the board approval. And Mr. Gass and I and Mr. Manning and Mr. Leary recommend that you authorize and accept the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar payment that we agreed to, tentatively agreed to at mediation, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, counsel, I want to certainly commend Jones Edmonds on the front side for, uh, knowing upfront, you know, what it would possibly be, and then because of the unit pricing, uh, understanding at the end that there would be reconciliation or truing that would take place. Uh, there, I think it says a lot about, uh, the quality services that we, we get from Jones Edmonds, uh, there. And then when I go back over to administration, uh, both Mr. Leary and Mr. Gass, uh, along with our counsel, um, Castleberry and Manning, um, I don't know what magic wand you waved, but I think it was certainly commendable that, uh, you were able to let them know, uh, that Putnam County did the homework, uh, there, and so the negotiations through the mediation, to me, is, is, is something that we all should applaud uh, because we could easily, uh, be sitting in a courtroom and waiting on someone who knows nothing about what the landfill operations, uh, are required in order to get this done, so I want to applaud you. Any other commissioner comments?
Let me just add one other thing now that you mentioned it, it's, it's in my memo. Uh, in my opinion, if we do not accept the settlement and we would proceed to litigation, our exposure would be in the one million to one point seven million dollar range, and that we would be responsible for, uh, the contractor's attorney fees also, which would be huge. And, uh, the, the only thing they would need to do in order to have us responsible to pay their attorney fees is to get some sort of judgment. It could be as little as five hundred thousand or so, we would still have to pay their attorneys. My estimation, we would owe a million to a million and seven and would definitely owe their attorney's fees also. As a prev- they would be the prevailing party.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Ms. Harris?
I want to echo what you had to say about the excellent job they did of negotiating that. That's actually less than half of what they were asking, and, um, they just put a lot of thought into it and they were well-prepared and, uh, with Jones Edmonds' assistance. And I just think they deserve an attaboy.
That's right.
Concur, add an applause, absolutely, absolutely. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, um, attorney, thank you very well for the work you've done. Um, I was excited when we met and I asked you if the checks were already written, just waiting for a signature to go on them. So, um, I wholeheartedly support this and I appreciate it.
Mr. Pelosiya?
Same sentiments, um, absolutely, uh, savings to the county, no doubt.
Mr. Libley?
Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Boudreau, I know you worked hard on this, and Jones Edmond also, but one thing that wasn't mentioned is the reason for mining, um, not only to gain that landfill space, but to get the benzene levels in that water table down, and that appears to have worked, and I thank you very much. We're coming out of the dark side again into the light on something that was just ignored for a long period of time. And Mr. Gass, I thank you, your leadership there and, um, you know, even through this, this meeting this morning, we are going forward with this landfill and getting it into, uh, prosperity, I hope. Thank you so much.
This, this chairman would like to entertain a motion.
Uh, so move approval of the, um,
Mediation.
Mediation report.
Second.
Whoops, sorry.
Have a proper motion and a second that the mediation report with the, um, settlement, um, be approved and authorized. Further discussion? District four?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District three, yes. Denominations, thank you so much. Okay, the Honorable Clerk of Court, Tim Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just did want to mention, I, I'm sorry that Mr. Jones isn't here today, but, uh, uh, he in the finance office was awarded the, an annual, uh, recognition for outstanding financial reporting. Uh, this is a yearly process that, uh, our, uh, comprehensive annual financial report is judged by an independent, uh, review board and it was de- deemed to be, um, of outstanding quality. Uh, this is an award that this county has, uh, received for over thirty years. Prior to when I was. Prior to when I was here, but when Mr. Anderson was our finance director, he also received that. And since then, Mr. Jones has been able to receive that. So it demonstrates the transparency and the character of that report that's put out for consumption, not only by you, but the citizens. I wanted to congratulate him once again on receiving that award. And other than that, I have no other items.
Had a clear, I thought I saw him at this meeting earlier, unless it was two weeks ago.
He was here earlier.
Okay, alright, I want to make sure.
He was, but we're a year in, close out, and he was busy.
Understand, understand, just for him to be here. And a segue from that, I can't say enough about, again, the professional skills that Mike Anderson used and how he handles his office and how sincere he is about what he do there. He's kind of the man behind the scenes, soft-spoken to a degree, except we had a couple of times that he was able to get his blood pressure up a little and, but I thank you for what you do. I know this time of year and especially when we start the visioning process and the budget process of you and the administrator working together to really present to us what we need and giving us the reality report, because you know, the pine is guy just don't work, so, but thank you so much. Okay, thank you, Honorable Smith, Commissioner Harvey, anything else?
I'd just like to mention, last Saturday, we had a day on the lake, Save Rodman Reservoir did. And we brought out legislators, Congressman Yoho was in attendance and took them on a tour of the lake. And we had a really good time out there. I want to thank Commissioner Lible for the donation he made of some presents for the kids out there. And we also mentioned that everybody was different places that day and I understand that. And we told them how much the board supports that organization, I mean, that, the Lake Okwaha, so just want to let you know that. Tonight, if you see my orange and blue tie, that means that there's a gator club meeting here at the golf course, yes. And if you're in attendance tonight and a gator fan, there will be a special state award given to Putnam County Gator Club tonight.
So no Seminoles allowed?
Yeah, they can come. Don't like the colors, that's all.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Pelisier?
I have nothing to bring forward.
Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Chairman, we, as you know, we have been fighting to try to keep Ride Solution going since that's our only transportation in Putnam County. Other than individual cars, but it's very important to a lot of people. And the funding is the big issue, keeping it going. And something that my committee has suggested that we do is look into the Swanee River Economic Council. They receive approximately a million dollars in funding on behalf of Putnam County to supply services. And it's services to the elderly and it includes transportation. We get reports from them, but they're very difficult to read. They're about that thick and they include all the counties that they represent. And with your permission, I would like to invite them to appear before us at a meeting and explain to us exactly what do they do? What do they do with Putnam County's money? How many people do they serve? What services are there? So I'd like to issue a formal invitation, maybe through you, Mr. Chairman, and ask them to come and just tell us what they do and how many people that helps. And I think it's long overdue.
That would be wonderful, I would certainly be pleased to, to send that correspondence out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Saturday, while Larry was doing the chore for the county at Rodman Reservoir, Lake Okwaha, I got the pleasure of representing the board at the Lee Connolly House, our domestic violence shelters annual golf tournament. It was a hard job, but somebody had to do it. Anyhow, it was a good day, the first time it hadn't rained in quite a few weeks and we got a whole day of sunshine and the golfers really showed up. They had a successful day and it was really a good time and they raised a lot of money for the cause. And I'm very pleasured to represent the board there.
Thank you so much. Let me make some concluding remarks. We will go in recess in just a few moments because we will be back at five oh five PM for the final, second reading and on the resolution adopting the final levy for the ad valorem taxes and adopting the final budget and also approving the five-year capital plan. But I want to just drill down for just a moment on what I would call healthy and elaborate debate deliberation earlier in this meeting. The civility that we've been preaching and pledging certainly was demonstrated in this meeting. I don't want to ever come across to our citizens or my colleagues as suppressing your voice. Certainly, I tried to humbly moderate our meeting so that we can maintain order and follow preliminary procedures. But your exchange of thoughts and ideas and administrator coming in and chiming in, our attorneys and everybody interacting, it was a well-oiled machine and I certainly want to commend us for hearing our citizens and oftentimes when they think we not hearing or that we have selected hearing or that we're just totally deaf. I think the process worked this morning. The issue that we will not be able to deal with is all of the misinformation that is sometime put out there and publicized. We really don't have the time to chase it all down. But I think that if we will continue what we've done here today, engaging in healthy and elaborate debate, our citizens at least will know that we are all having to be partakers of whatever legislation that passes up here. It's not like there is a rule of exception or an exemption is there. So thank you so much, I really felt good about how the process worked. And at the end of the day, I hope our citizens really recognize that we do work hard to try to move us forward as a progressive community, so thank you for that. Also, I'm very pleased that when I drive through East Putnam or East Palatka at night, we can see better. The street lights are activated over on the east side of the river and it certainly looked like we were in the city before we get in the city. As a matter of fact, I think, Mr. Leary, the lights are brighter in East Palatka. Alright, okay, again, commissioners, be reminded that we will convene as part of the Transportation Committee at two o'clock today in the conference room, suite two hundred there. At this time, entertain a motion for recess.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you all for being here.